Good evening, everybody. At this time, I will reconvene into open session, this meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees, September 2, 2021, at 6:37 PM. Due to health and safety concerns related to the COVID-19 coronavirus, members of the public are encouraged to participate by watching the school board meeting online at www.aisd.net. One or more trustee may participate in this meeting via video conference call. A quorum of the Board of Trustees will be physically present at the administration building. Members of the public may access this meeting via AISD website at www.aisd.net. We will start our meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join Mr. Hogg in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And electronic devices to avoid any disruptions around you. And now, if you would all please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay. So excited to see our students back in this room today. So the first item on our agenda this evening is our programmer presentation. Our student performance tonight is from the Martin High School String Quartet. Ms. Anita Foster.
Greetings, President Mays, members of the Board, Dr. Cavassos, everyone here tonight, and everyone watching online. We have a great presentation tonight. As Ms. Mays pointed out, we have our Martin High School Quartet here tonight. And when I call your name, raise your bow. Ella Tran, good job. Christian Diaper on violin. And then we have Katie Ross on viola, and Lauren Sepulveda on cello. Now, these students are outstanding, and you're going to know why when I tell you. Not only are they here in the quartet, they're in the Symphony Orchestra. They participate as drum major in the marching band, sing in the choir, participate in the STEM Academy, you name it, they do it all because they're great students. So congratulations being here tonight to kick off our new school year with our first student performance of, um, hang on just a second, it's in German. So give me a minute, translate out of Texan. Ina Kleiner, "Not Musik." How'd that do? Ina Kleiner, "Not Musik." Did I get close, y'all? Okay. And that is a lovely piece by Mozart. Take it away, guys.
Thank you so much to our Martin High School String Quartet. Can y'all give them another round of applause, please? Okay. Next thing on our agenda is our High School Student of the Month, who is an Arlington High School student. I will now pass the mic over to the wonderful Principal of Arlington High School, Ms. Stacy Humbles.
Thank you, President Mays, Dr. Cavassos, and members of the Board. I'm pleased to introduce to you Emma Vasquez, a senior at Arlington High School. Emma is an outstanding student athlete and a true leader on our campus. She's currently the captain of the volleyball team and is a member of our Student Leadership Panel. She was the 2020 District Defender of the Year, 2020 Fort Worth Star Telegram Third Team Libero, and has committed to UT Tyler to continue her volleyball career. Emma is a role model to other athletes and always puts her academics first. She made the Academic All-District Team from 2018 to 2020. She's a member of NHS and currently holds a 4.15 GPA, taking all Advanced and AP courses during her four years of high school. Emma is a four-year choir member. She's a member of the Corral and the Varsity Show Choir. She also made the Region Honor Choir. Emma is a kind and caring student who is full of positivity. Her teachers love the energy she brings to the classroom and the way she makes the most of everything she does. She makes friends wherever she goes and was even crowned the Homecoming Duchess her freshman and sophomore years. On a personal note, I am especially proud of Emma because not only am I her principal at Arlington High, I was her principal at Butler Elementary. Even as a young Butler Bronco, Emma was a student who worked hard and had the best attitude. She and her peers created the Kindness Club in 5th grade, and that club still exists today at that campus. When I heard she went to Bailey instead of Shaq as an 8th grader, I remember being so disappointed, but now I'm thrilled at that decision. I have loved being a part of Emma's life and look forward to all she'll do in the future. Congratulations, Emma.
Congratulations, Emma. And if you would please come to the microphone, we would love to hear a few words from you.
Hello. Thank you, Ms. Humbles.
You can say anything you wish. You can introduce anyone who might be here with you.
Okay. Well, I would love to thank Ms. Humbles for picking me up Student of the Month. It meant so much. And I've had her my elementary school years, and honestly, I was scared of her at first. But, but she has helped me come a long way. And I also think my mom, sitting right here, she pushes me in many ways, and she is a single mother, and she takes care of me, and she inspires me. And then my dad and his wife Amber, they support me in all I do, and I just love to thank them. And I'm excited to continue my life going into UT Tyler. I am committed there, and I have a four-year scholarship. So hopefully, I continue good things. So, thank you.
Emma, congratulations. What great words that we've heard from you. Welcome, parents. I always love to look back at the parents and see students, thank their parents for raising them, giving them guidance. Congratulations to you on a scholarship. That is awesome. You've taken care of business in the classroom. Congratulations on starting the Kindness Club. That still continues because that's one need that never goes away. So congratulations once again to you.
Thank you so much.
Emma, if you don't mind, Dr. Cavassos and I would like to come down and give you a little something to take with you. So this is Mr. Spence. He's going to come and take our picture, and we're going to make this permanent forever. This right here is a pin. This is a pin that the Board of Trustees wear. This is a pin that we give to those that you have contributed a lot to AISD. So this is something that you can have and that you can wear even when you go to UT Tyler.
Thank you.
Emma, this is to commemorate today, and I'm very proud of you and continue to lead. I thank you for being such a strong student and a leader in your school. We sincerely appreciate that for you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Next on our agenda is our Community Engaged for Excellence Award of Appreciation. The honoree at this meeting is Sharefest Texas. Mr. Peralis, please do an introduction for us.
President Mays, Dr. Cavassos, members of the Board. We are so excited to resume this special presentation where we get to honor and celebrate community groups that are supporting our students and staff every day in our schools. And this is just one of the many ways that we get to celebrate and say thank you. And saying thank you is so important, especially what our community has done to help support our students and staff. And so we're so grateful to be able to continue and resume this award. Now, back in April of 2020, this group was queued up to receive this special presentation. We all know what happened in March of 2020, and so they have not been waiting idly in the wings. They've been active, but we are so excited that we get to recognize them this evening. So let me tell you a little bit about them. So for the Community Engaged for Excellence Award of Appreciation, we have Sharefest Texas, led by John Telemann, founder. Established in 2013, Sharefest Texas operates to provide hope to the underserved and to provide an opportunity for communities to come together in service. Sharefest Texas collaborates with leaders, community service organizations, and business partners to align strengths and transform the surrounding community. Sharefest Texas serves to enable youth to create a better tomorrow. Under this banner, Sharefest Texas has risen and made great impact in our learning community. Beginning in collaboration with Kiwanis International in 2015, Mr. Telemann provided support as a key club advisor to Sam Houston High School. Further collaborating, Telemann's team developed a two-year mentorship program connecting Sam Houston High School students with children at Safe Haven. This flourished into Sharefest Texas engaging with seven key clubs in Arlington and creating multiple opportunities for students to provide service in the community. In addition to engaging AISD students, Sharefest Texas has supported campus-based projects as Cookin Early Education Center and Wemish World Language Academy. As part of Cookin's 80th celebration in 2018, Sharefest Texas commissioned a local artist to paint several wall murals and raised hallway signage throughout the building. I believe that artist may be with us this evening as well. They provided additional amenities to students, to support students, teachers, and staff, such as appliances for the teacher's lounge, some furnishing for the education center, and additional teacher appreciation events. At Wemish World Language Academy, Sharefest Texas led nearly 60 AISD and UTA students to help beautify the campus with the planting of the Peace and Victory Garden in the fall of 2019. They commissioned another artist to create paintings that depict rural landmarks and welcome signs in Spanish, French, and English in the winter of 2020. During our COVID environment, Sharefest Texas continued to engage students by rallying AISD key club members to collect articles to make welcome home bags for Safe Haven and hygiene kits for the unsheltered homeless. With these efforts, Mr. Telemann and Sharefest Texas are poised to continue their support of the Arlington AISD learning community. So it's with great pleasure that we recognize Sharefest Texas, led by John Telemann.
Wow. I am deeply, very honored to be here amongst this group, Dr. Cavassos and Alkisha, and you too. But anyway, I've known most of you for a while. I really enjoyed what we were doing back there in 2019, 2020. You've seen the results of it. It's pretty amazing, still getting a lot of, I won't say accolades for what we've done. But as you know, it takes a village to do this, all right, and accomplish what we have in the last year and a half. And I brought part of the village with me, okay? I've got on this end is my warehouse manager, all right, is William Turner, and the man in uniform is Chief Petty, all right? And the man that really did a lot back there in 2018, 2019, he was the muralist, and that's Michelangelo Vaughn. All right. And then there's John Patisic, who is my distribution now manager for all the inventory we send out to Safe Haven and all the other women's charities. And of course, a very strong supporter is my beautiful wife, all right, who works for AISD as well, all right? She's a special needs driver for Busters, all right? And she comes home to me, special needs. So again, I thank you so much for, you know, giving me this award. I think I'm brilliant. I'm overwhelmed, all right? Things are really starting to happen, and I couldn't do it without AISD. I couldn't do it without, Aaron, I couldn't do it without the people out here, all right? So thank you so much.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Thelma, don't go away. We're going to come down and take a picture and give the presentation, but I do want to say, wow, thank you to your organization and to see how instrumental you have been in touching so many different groups and organizations. And really, hats off for sharing and showing and leading a way for our students to give back to their community. Once again, it's something that we really need, so we really appreciate you. And wow, to everyone that supports this organization. So now, Dr. Cavassos and I are going to come down and present you with your presentation. Anyone whom you would like to be in the picture, if they feel comfortable, please come on up and we'll grab a picture.
Congratulations again to you and your wonderful group.
Okay. Next on our agenda, we will consider administrative ratifications and appointments. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays. I'd like to recommend that the Board ratify the appointment of the individuals discussed in closed session for Executive Director of Elementary Schools and Assistant Principal for Young Junior High.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Chapa. We have you virtually. Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion to approve the administrative ratifications?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Mrs. Fowler, a second by Mr. Hogg. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will roll call vote, starting with Mr. Chapa.
Mr. Chapa, I vote yes.
Emily Fowler, I vote yes.
Lou Yager, vote yes.
Keisha Mays, I vote yes.
Sarah McMurro, yes.
All those present vote in the affirmative. The motion passes. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays. And so first, I'd like to introduce our new Executive Director of Elementary Schools, Ms. Shelley Austin, and you'll see her bio here in just a minute there. Shelley, most recently, was our Director of Leadership Development. You may see her bio. And she was also the principal at Miller Elementary, also has been an Assistant Principal, a district instructional coach, a 3rd and 4th grade teacher, and a 4th and 5th grade teacher. Shelley, it's outstanding, and congratulations to her on this appointment. Next, we'll introduce our new Assistant Principal for Young Junior High, and that is Courtney Boyd. Courtney, most recently, was the SCE Support Interventionist at Young Junior High, has taught 7th grade at Young, 7th grade ELR at Young, and has also been a substitute. So congratulations to Courtney on her appointment.
Very good, and congratulations. Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Next on our agenda is public hearing. This evening, there are none, so we will move on to our open forum for agenda items. As stated on the posted agenda, members of the public who desire to address the Board regarding an item on this agenda are required to register by sending an email to the Superintendent of School Secretary, LBENJAM@AISD.net no later than 3:00 PM the day of the Board meeting. Mrs. Benjamin, do we have any requesters registered to address the Board regarding agenda items?
Yes, ma'am. We have a list that has been provided for you.
Okay. So first, I'd like to welcome everyone who is going to speak via in-person or virtual this evening. This is a routine part of the school board's agenda for regularly scheduled meetings. This segment of the meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to share their views with the trustees on items that are on the agenda tonight. It is not intended to be a discussion or debate, and trustees will not reply to the speakers. Derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated. Personnel matters are not appropriate subjects for open forum. You will have two minutes to speak. Mrs. Benjamin will notify you when your time is up. At that time, please end your presentation. So as I call your name, if you would please come forward to the microphone. And it looks like our first speaker is virtual, if that's correct. Isabel Barrientos.
Hi, yes.
Hi, Isabel. Your time starts now. We can hear you.
Dr. Cavassos and Board members, my name is Isabel Barrientos, and I am a senior at Martin High School. I attend the Dan Diaper Career and Tech Center. I'm here today to talk about how AISD takes little to no safety precautions against COVID. In three out of four of my classes I take at Martin, I've received emails about being in close contact with someone who has COVID. I am scared of going into my classes and having a chance of getting COVID because students in my classes who don't wear masks mention how they're not vaccinated. In the hallways at Martin, there are always a lot of students crowded. Something should be done about the crowds. For example, the passing periods could be staggered a couple minutes by grade levels. At the CDT Center, before class ends, we always wipe down the tables with the cleaner. I don't get why Martin High School stops cleaning and disinfecting surfaces. Also, at the CDT Center, experts come in and spray disinfectant around the school at night. All schools should be doing that. In classrooms last year, they would make you use hand sanitizer whenever you entered the schools. That should start, they should start doing that again. At Pepperell's High Schools, they should encourage students to wear masks because a lot of students gather together in the same place at once with no social distancing. If AISD cannot mandate masks because parents and students make it political, all schools can at least clean surfaces and disinfect doorknobs and other surfaces. As of yesterday, as of today, there are 113 student cases at Martin and 1,142 cases in the whole district. 113 out of 3,800 students doesn't seem like a big percentage, but imagine in two months how many more cases there would be. I'd appreciate if you would take into consideration a mask mandate or cleaning and disinfecting services to protect students and teachers and to lessen the spread of COVID.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we have Megan Plumley. Are you present? Hi, Megan. We can hear you.
I'll go ahead and say. My name is Megan Plumley, and I'm a senior in high school. Every day, I see more empty seats in my classes. Me and my classmates will get emails telling us that someone in our class has COVID, though they won't tell us who. We see the empty seats, and we all know it was a kid who didn't wear a mask and wasn't vaccinated. Every day, the number of COVID cases in my school keeps going up, and wearing a mask is one of the easiest ways to slow down the spread, but it only works when we all wear it. A large complaint I keep hearing is how masks restrict personal freedoms or scare us, but there's a limit to those freedoms when they directly affect the health of others. Taking directly from AISD sources, there have been 412 confirmed high school cases on 17,000 high school students, which means 2% of us have become empty seats. Our schools are currently too crowded to effectively implement social distancing and other safety measures. So masks and vaccinations are perhaps the only defense we students have against this pandemic. Kids who refuse to wear a mask put more than themselves at risk. They put everyone and their families at risk. I wish my biggest worry when I walk through my halls was just my math assignment, but that's not possible for us. My mother is a respiratory therapist, and every day, she sees more and more patients die from COVID. They will say, it's my bad luck, but it's truly just ignorance. We can't keep pretending we're back to normal. It's just not possible when this virus is still attacking us. Either we need a mask mandate or we need a virtual school option. Listen to your students, please. I am tired of being ignored. I have a petition for a mask mandate for the schools, and I have about 1,500 signatures, and that's from people in other districts, students, teachers, and even faraway relatives. Please listen to us.
Thank you, Megan. Next, I believe, on virtual, we have Fabiola Barrientos.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. It's Fabiola.
Okay, thank you. My name is Fabiola Barrientos, and as a parent of Martin High School student in Arlington, I have serious concerns about my daughter getting COVID at school. This is only the third week of school, and I've already received three emails saying my child has been in the same classroom as a student who tested positive for COVID. If the AISD is not making, getting the vaccine mandatory, although my daughter had to be vaccinated to enter school since kindergarten, then please make me understand why the school district is not in the very least mandating masks just to appease a few conspiracy theory believing parents or to make the governor happy. Do you not realize he and his family are vaccinated? I don't care about his presidential aspirations or his donor class. This is life or death situation. My daughter and family's health is at stake. The high school is not even disinfecting common areas. In Martin High School, there are now over 113 positive cases, and in the whole AISD is over 1,142. Just how many people have to get gravely sick or die just for you to take this seriously? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Dr. Mary Ann Weaver. Yes.
Hello. I'm going to take, I don't know if you can hear me on this. I'll take it off, but, um, this is far away.
Y'all, please do not, do not speak when someone else has had an opportunity, and we will grant you the same respect. Thank you.
So I am a doctor. I am board certified in family medicine. I have two children who are in AISD. They go to Marymore Elementary in the Southwest District, and this is unacceptable, the level of spread. They, there's contact tracing, which I think is helpful, but I have gotten a letter every day, and I have a 5th grader, so he tells me all the tea. I'm like, who was out today? And he can tell me exactly who it was. The most upsetting thing happened this week, and is why you all got a lovely email from me, in addition to coming to talk, is that I had an email that his 5th grade teacher exposed the whole class to COVID. So not only are his classmates exposing him, but his teacher is exposing him.
We're exposed enough. We're not going to go back.
He is 10 years old. He cannot get vaccinated. I don't, I love AISD. I graduated from here. My dad went to Sam Houston. The last time I was here, I was accepting an award for Academy Decathlon. This is important to me. I want my children to go to public schools. I don't want to have to take them, I can take them to private schools. That's an option for me, but I believe in public schools. I don't want to have to take them, I can take them to private schools. That's an option for me, but I believe in public schools.
I'm sorry, I don't want your time to be taken. Y'all, please be quiet so we can hear what she's saying. Okay, so, Dr. Weaver. Hey, excuse me. Excuse me. If, if you continue to talk, then I will ask that you be excused, unless you're at the microphone, of which you will be allowed your 2 minutes to speak, if that's the case. Thank you. Dr. Weaver, your time can continue.
Thank you. So I implore y'all to be brave, like Dallas. Your cases are insane, and they're going up faster. My children's school has a 5% positivity rate for the year, in 2 and 1/2. It's actually over 5% in the 2 and 1/2 weeks. It's endangering teachers. It's endangering children who are trying to mask. And there's no other things that I think would be helpful. You know, I don't want to leave you no solutions. Allowing family contacts to stay home. We've had people whose parents have been sick, but if they send their children to school, it's going to be an unexcused absence. Testing at campuses would be very helpful, especially in middle school and high school. And then more strong language about masks, encouraging masks.
Ma'am, I gave her extra time. Your time is now over.
Thank you, Dr. Weaver.
I can email y'all if you would like some more other suggestions. Thank you.
Okay, so, next, I believe Lydia Bean is virtual.
Thank you.
Ms. Bean, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, your time starts now.
My name is Lydia Bean. I'm a mom and a small business owner in North Arlington, and my younger brother teaches at Thornton Elementary School. My mother is a retired Arlington School Counselor, and I'm asking you to please pass a mandate, a mask mandate, as our best way to be able to save lives in the pandemic. I lost my aunt to COVID-19 last year. I currently have another family member in the ICU on a respirator, and another family member also, we're having her funeral on Saturday, who just died of COVID-19. And I know that there are other families who are gonna have to suffer like we suffered. And you have a chance to be brave and step up and do the right thing, do the brave thing, and save as many lives as we can. This is probably gonna be the most important thing you do as a leader, as a civic servant, and so I ask you to do it now. You will never have a chance to save so many lives as you do right now. Masks protect other people, not primarily the weather. They protect other people, so we need to do it all together. I'm the founder of a nonprofit in the area called Faith in Texas, so I've worked with churches, mosques, and synagogues throughout the city of Arlington, and I have personally knocked on thousands of doors in the city of Arlington to talk to people about their problems. And I am very confident when I say that we are the silent majority, those who support safety, who support common sense, science-based practices, like universal masking. And I will be watching very closely, and I will work very hard on behalf of those who do the right thing. And I will work very hard to hold you accountable if you choose not to be brave. And I'm gonna do this in honor of my Aunt Kathy, who died of COVID-19, to make sure as few families as possible have to go through what we went through. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And so before I call the next name, I just want to say, and this is to everyone in here, if there's another outburst where we can't hear, and you're not at the microphone, where you will be allowed an opportunity to speak, then I will ask that you please leave until everybody's through speaking, just so we can hear, just to be respectful for everybody, please. Next, I believe, is in person, Jay Nam.
Good evening, Arlington AISD Board members and superintendent. My name is Jay Nam. I'm an Arlington resident, teacher at a neighboring school district, and a union member of American Federation of Teachers. I'm urging the district to support a mask mandate, and this is especially important for our students. Unlike adults, they do not have a choice to get vaccinated or not. I do not think this is a matter of personal choice or parent decision, since parents that are not informed or refuses to be informed are actually putting their own children in danger. It is parental negligence. It is just like not wearing a seatbelt. Parents do not have the choice to endanger their child by not putting them in a seatbelt. Of course, seatbelts are not the most comfortable device, but it saved numerous lives ever since. Nobody nowadays thinks seatbelts are a matter of political discussion, violation of civil liberties, or even a personal choice. It is not 100% perfect, but significantly safer, just like wearing a mask and getting vaccinated. Please make the right decision for our student's safety based on science and professional medical advice. Step up, show, and prove that you, board members, care about student's safety, even if there's a legal consequence. If you are so scared of it, you probably aren't brave enough and don't deserve to serve and protect our public schools. Thank you.
Okay, next, I have Kim Martinez.
Good evening, President Mays, members of the board, and Dr. Cavassos. Thank you for allowing me the chance to speak tonight. I just want to ask you, what are you waiting for? What are you waiting for? Are you waiting for us to have 2 deaths from the same campus in the same week, like Connolly ISD? 2 teachers died of COVID in this past week. You think that's okay? It's not okay, Bowie. It's not okay. I am here advocating for you to stand up and do the right thing, and defy the governor, mandate masks, join a lawsuit against him. I don't care, but do something. In the absence of masking, at least do something to mitigate in other ways. Stop having in-person faculty meetings. That's ridiculous. We've had it on Zoom the last year and 1/2. Why can't we keep having them on Zoom? Just one less, one more way we can have less contact with each other. The same for large assemblies, especially in high school. What the other people said about the hallways being crowded, I mean, it is literally a crush of humanity going down those halls, and few masks. I sent a few of you a picture that my son took in the hallways in the passing period. The cases are going up and up and up and up. What are you waiting for? Are you waiting for someone to die? Are you waiting to lose a student? Oh, well, I didn't even know that. Here in Arlington, I wasn't aware. That's, it's not okay. You guys need to be brave. You're the leaders. Be the example. I see you fraternizing with the people that are so rude that won't even allow other people who speak out a different opinion of them to talk. I see you hugging them. Wow. I hope you're ready, because when you're up for reelection, you're going down, because I will be the campaign manager of whoever runs against you.
Next, we have on, next we have speaking is David Park.
All right, my name is David Park. I'm here to talk about mask mandates. These disposable masks are all made in China. They're not our friends, and they have questionable quality control. They don't seal around the face, and there aren't any valves, and you're breathing in your own mouth bacteria. Now, this whole getup right here, this is actually the OSHA prescribed, this is the OSHA PP you have to wear when you're dealing with mold spores, and the virus is actually smaller than mold spores, right? So we should require all students to wear 3M respirators with the appropriate cartridges, replace weekly, and all children must be fit-tested. Eye protection that has a seal all around the eyes. Tie that coveralls and booties replaced daily. All talking should be banned, and everyone should be separated by Plexiglas. No eating or drinking, because you gotta take the mask off. No bathrooms. Students can wear diapers. Ban all sports unless they wear ankle monitors, like Evenville High School in Washington. It's for real. Now, if this is sounding insane to you, you have some semblance of common sense left. Bad actors won't stop at the mask, and they'll keep pushing the boundaries, and it'll get to this ridiculous level, mandatory vaccines, and unknown bad science fiction crazy stuff, okay? Your school district cannot afford the consequences continuing with this mask mandate. You're gonna be facing massive lawsuits, and many parents are gonna be pulling their kids out and going the homeschool route. Do the right thing, and follow the state law, and ban these mask mandates. Mark my words, you pass this mask mandate, it's gonna turn into insanity. I recently moved from California a few months ago. I heard the 2 weeks to drop the curve before. That lasted over a year, lockdowns, and over 1/3 of small business owners lost everything. All right? Please don't turn this great state of Texas into the hellhole I escaped from. Thank you for your time.
Okay, next to speak, we have Jason Anderson.
Madam President, Mr. Superintendent, rest of the board, thank you very much for your, for this opportunity. Someone mentioned that it was unacceptable, or something like that, to go forward as we're going. Let me tell you what's unacceptable. That this board, this body, would even consider a mask mandate, given that you're funded by the state, and the state law is that no mask mandates. I can read you the executive order if you'd like. I'm sure you all know what it says. No mask mandates, period. You cannot do it. The fact that you're even considering this is ridiculous. It's absolutely ridiculous. I'm a, I'm a father of 2 children that go to the AISD. I have a sophomore at Martin, Martin High, and I have an elementary school child at Butler Elementary. I will not send them to, to school with masks. Let me tell you why. The mask robs them of their identity, their individuality. It, it destroys their self-confidence. It makes them think they're dirty. And on top of that, it, it destroys their morale. They don't want to go to school with this getup on. They sat, they've missed an entire year of school last year. It's crazy. We cannot, if people want to wear a mask, wear a mask. If you wear a spacesuit, wear a spacesuit. You know, whatever makes you happy and makes you feel good. But we cannot mandate these masks. I'm a cancer survivor, okay? I spent 6 days in Arlington Memorial with COVID. I'm still not gonna wear a mask, and I'm not gonna make my children wear a mask, because I've got research right here, not from the media, and not from right-wing nut sites and all that. These are things that, and I could send all of this to you. There's 12 sightings here, medical journals from around the world that say masks don't work.
Thank you, sir. Your time's over.
Okay, next, we have Rebecca David. Is Rebecca David present? She happen to be virtual? Okay. Next, we have Kim Worley.
Here we are again. 7 of you came in today with no mask. Not one of you sanitized your hands after work. I have 2 sets of numbers for you. 86, 89, 77, 60, 100, 81, 86. Average, 82. 95, 100, 90, 90, 90, 99, 100. Average, 94. No, these aren't COVID statistics. These are the difference in my daughter's grades between last semester and this progress report. That's a 12-point difference. Same course load, same number of AP classes. The only difference is in-person learning, mask-free, being around her friends in a normal environment. While I can't see every student's statistics, I wonder how many other students are experiencing the exact same thing. If masking worked, we would have seen it over the last 19 months. 3-week mandate? No, we tried that before. 2 weeks to flatten the curve turned into 19 months of chaos. If we're honest with ourselves, the virus is never going away. According to National Foundation of Infectious Disease, human coronavirus was identified in the 1960s. What is our end goal? While I hope that the end goal is students, teachers, and families thriving, I'm losing faith. I believe for the majority of you, yes, that is your goal. There are some, however, that are determined to have control. Board of trustees, please, I'm asking you to stop. Stop making students worry. Stop making teachers worry. Stop making families worry about what the day might bring. Stop trying to go around the law. Stop trying to defy the governor's orders. Stop trying to take away freedom. It is exhausting. It is tiresome, and it is not fair. So while some of you tirelessly exhaust your efforts to break the law and defy the governor's orders, please know.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker, I believe, is virtual, is Robert Gregory. Okay. Okay, we'll check back. Next, I have A.J. Rogers. Is A.J. Rogers present? Is A.J. Rogers virtual? Oh, okay. Thank you.
Trust the science, we say. There is plenty of science to prove that these cloth, tissue paper of a substance does not work. And it's from credible sources, and I know that it's deemed as misinformation, but that is only a smoke signal. I'm gonna tell you what this is really about. This is about control. Historically, masks have been used as a form of submission, oppression, domination, and control. We see this in history, in the history of slavery. Now, this part of history has actually been hidden for most. These masks were used on slaves to keep them silent, to dominate and to control them. Do y'all see this? Yeah, yeah. We talk about oppression, right? We talk about oppression. Let's talk about this mask oppression, because that's what I'm calling it. It's oppression. These children do not deserve to be treated like slaves under this suppression, oppression. They should not be forced to be treated, and I'm gonna say it again, as slaves. This is demonic domination, and it's control. I got one more thing to say. We go to restaurants, we sit down, we take our mask off, and we eat. We're not socially distancing. Maybe we can replace school desks with restaurant tables, so that when kids sit down, they can take their mask off.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Okay, next, we have J.P. Woodruff. Are you present? J.P. Woodruff? Mr. Woodruff?
Yeah, hi.
Hi.
Hi, everybody. I, I'm 4th generation Arlington. Just let you guys know. I know you've only been here since 99, and it's, it's indicative on who's supporting what in this, in this particular agenda. My man Bowie here, he's not a mask guy. You're 50/50, kind of on the, you know, it's, right now, we're in a situation of choice. I don't, I can, I can go through the science, which doesn't exist. There's nothing at all that exists science-wise that protects you. 2 microns is a small virus. 6 microns is the best mask. That's a, that's a mosquito going through a chain-link fence. There is nothing to protect you from this virus. Nothing. All you're doing right now is supporting an agenda that represents something that's probably representing some form of compensation somewhere. I think it's understandable, and I'm, I'm telling you, guys, you guys got choices to make for the eternal existence of your souls. We have a choice to free our children, to give them the ability to make choices themselves, and, and this, there's no protection with this mask. This is a control CCP Nazi-type of a control environment. And I'm telling you, guys, you're going to, it's gonna be tough on you at the end of the decision-making process at Judgment Day, because everybody's gonna get judged. I don't, I'm not following this thing over here, but these, these masks don't work. You guys need to make the right choices with God, and pray about it. You know, you gotta rebuke the enemy that's allowing you guys to control these children. I mean, it's straight up. You've got to just be free, and that is what our country was founded on, is freedom of choice. God bless you. Talk to your maker, and we'll be having deliverance out front if you guys want to get saved, okay? Thank you. Thank you.
Next we have Blanca Martinez.
I have here masked children in COVID-19 published studies. This is science, this is not emotion. Letter to the school board, masked children in COVID-19 published studies, DeSantis holds roundtable on masks in schools, this should absolutely not be imposed. Masking, lack of evidence with politics, improper masking is common and unsanitary. Dangerous pathogens found on children's face masks. Here's another list of all kinds of national studies backed by true science and true doctors, many of which I personally know that would be here, but they have to make the rounds in all of the city school boards and city council because of this insanity that's going on. Dr. Tenpenny just published the other day that she feels like calling CPS, Children Protective Services, every time she sees a child with a mask. Why? Because the science is here. The science is here, it is her fault, emotionally, psychologically, physically, and yet, we're continuing to wear this diaper on our face, looking like we in China. This is America, this is choice. If you want to put on the diaper on your face, go right ahead, go right ahead, but don't you be pushing it on me or brainwashing our kids to go home and go against their parents, which know what's better for them, most of them. So I say it is time for us to stand up and turn to our maker, like J.P. was saying. It's time to turn back to God, that's why we're in this situation, because nobody stood up when some crazy woman went in there and said, "Let's take prayers out of school." We don't say prayers anymore, we have a moment of silence. Are we ashamed of our maker? Are we ashamed of Jesus Christ, the One who gave His life for us? It is time to come back to prayer, it is time to come back to God, it is time to do the right thing.
Thank you. Your time is up.
So, next, next we have Kelly Jowell. Is Kelly Jowell here? Okay, no Kelly Jowell, is Kelly Jowell online? Okay. Next speaker will be Lorraine Stanford.
Mid-last week, Mr. Cavassos, I watched you stand out front of my son's elementary school, no mask, this far away from a Leo and two other staff members. When you were inside the school, when I walked my child in, guess what? You had a mask on. Are you afraid of my kid? Are you afraid of everybody's child? Because you can walk around in public without a mask on, but yet, you want to mask my child, my kindergartner, who can barely wipe his butt properly, puts his finger in his nose, then in his mouth, behind the mask. I confronted the principal, who you are now promoting to some other great whatever. She specifically told me, my child would not be allowed to attend school, and I would have to take him home if he didn't have a mask on. Last year, my child was a pre-K. Pre-K. Unbeknownst to me, that was actually false, but I was lied to, bullied. We will not be bullied anymore. We are free Americans, we will stay free Americans.
The next speaker is Rick Rouger, if I'm pronouncing it correctly.
Pretty much.
Pretty much.
Better, better than most. Glasses, one sec. My daughter's a third grader at Hill Elementary School. We chose not to send her to school on the wake for COVID. We were glued to our TVs in the 19th, waiting for your decision on virtual learning. In that morning, we found out it was approved, and I was at the school at 8:00 a.m., spoke with the principal, and was told the school district gave them no information, other than they would send a link to us on Monday. At 5:00 on Friday, we found out that we had missed the 5:00 deadline that you put, put on to enroll our child in virtual learning. Now, this was a kick in the head, kick in the head to both my wife and I. I was at the school Monday morning, and was told not to worry, picked up a computer, and I spoke with Ryan, your IT guy. He said she's now on a waiting list, that my child, that was, I was there 8:00 in the morning to enroll her on Friday. So then I then spoke with Iz Marie, which I'm sure you all know, and she contacted the school to verify everything I said was correct. And she then, and we had just talked to her the day before, and she said, "Mr. Topazar would then contact us and talk to us, we're still waiting on that phone call." So what, we then asked the school, "What do we do about our child's education?" They said, "Wait, that's all we can do is wait." Said, "Okay," so we talked to the ISD, we asked the ISD and Iz Marie, "What do we do with our kid's education?" They said, "Well, I guess wait." So now I'm asking y'all, "What do we do about our kid's education that starts next week? Are you guys gonna make some type of decision on this by Tuesday? I don't think you are." Now, you know, as parents, we shouldn't have had eight hours to enroll our child in this whole debacle, and we were informed by the school, misinformed by the school, that the AISD didn't properly inform them. So that's where we're sitting, and I don't know what I'm gonna do about my daughter's education at this point.
Thank you, sir, your time is up.
Thanks.
Mr. Rouger, just one moment.
Uh-huh.
Dr. Hill, once we're done, if, do you mind speaking with Mr. Rouger and find out exactly what he needs? Thank you.
Appreciate, thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Stephon Paudre.
Started all this. Hello. Hi. Two weeks ago, this board heard from passionate parents, teachers, and other members of this community who were concerned about the safety of schools. These concerns, citizens backed by thousands of physicians, went unheard. Two weeks later, more than 1,000 cases have been reported, according to AISD's COVID dashboard. Masks are proven to be an effective tool in slowing the spread of COVID-19 in communities, and it is the responsibility of Arlington ISD to protect this community, and you have failed thus. Members of this board decided to bend a knee to Greg Abbott, and therefore setting a precedence for the state to continue to strip local governments of their duties. It seems as if AISD is more focused on discouraging civic participation than slowing the spread. In order to speak in front of this board, a person must preregister by email before a 3:00 p.m. deadline. This class's policy prohibits poor and working-class families from having their voices heard at these meetings, where audience members are forced to wait hours before it actually starts on time. It's time for AISD to hold itself accountable and implement policies that will ensure voices are heard and this community is protected. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Jason Morgan.
I'm the next contestant on The Price is Wrong. Hello. I got something to read to y'all, I just gotta ask you a question real quick. Where were y'all on January 28th of 1986? That was the day of the Challenger disaster, and so if you go and read about it, you know, something about the O-rings, the SRB joints, and it was unseasonably kind of cold that day, but here's some other things I'd like to point out, and this is the definition of groupthink. Groupthink is the practice of thinking or making decisions as a group, in a way that discourages creativity or individual responsibility. Also, it's a phenomenon that occurs when a group of individuals reaches a consensus without critical reasoning or evaluation of the consequences or alternatives. Groupthink is based on a common desire not to upset the balance of a group of people. Well, we all know that the kids, that the masks don't work, I mean, these guys over here wearing them on the box, it says it doesn't work, you know? I don't know. And the other, they keep talking about cases, oh, the cases, and this, and the case that, all right. By the way, did y'all know the emergency use authorization for the COVID testing kit, the PCR test? The emergency use authorization got pulled from it, from false positive? So the case that locked down the world, that was never supposed to be used for that reason, the PCR test, got emergency use authorization pulled from it. They got a blip, not even a blip, on the local, on local news. That didn't fit their narrative. If they can sit there and argue cases for a test that does, uh, false positives all the time, you know, then they can keep them locked down, they can keep them in masks, they can, you know, under the emergency, non-emergency powers, okay?
Thank you, sir, your time is over.
Hang on, that's quick.
Next to speak, we have Joanna Cardoza.
My name is Joanna Cardoza, and I am a community advocate. I would like to start off by thanking Board Trustees Chappa and Will Banks for their leadership in fighting for the most vulnerable in our community. I am disappointed that a district that is so diverse as Arlington ISD has failed to provide vital information in multiple languages to the students and parents it serves. Information such, such as deadlines and registration information associated with the Vi, uh, Virtual Academy, and other vital district-related information. In regards to masks, I am disappointed that the school board failed to pass a mask mandate. The city of Arlington has had 757 deaths due to COVID-19. That is 19.4% of the county's deaths. Our current community spread is high, with a current positivity rate of 21%. Hospitalizations currently, currently consist of 12%, 12% of residents under the age of 15, 18% of residents under the age of 24. A mask mandate is not about taking away people's rights, or about making a political statement. It's about protecting the most vulnerable in our community, keeping our student, our schools open and properly staffed. There have already been several districts that have had to close due to COVID-19 outbreak. And I would also like to take the opportunity to share my concerns with the educational gap in some of our high schools. There are huge disparities in some of our high schools when it comes to reading, math, science, and social studies, from 13% to 17% in different subjects. Some of our schools, such as Sam Houston High School, needs more resources and more support. I am a Sam Houston High School alumni, and I care about my school and my, um, the area that I grew up in, and I really would appreciate it if y'all would really do more to support that high school. Thank you.
Okay, the next speaker is Kardisha Yarborough.
To the board, thank you for this opportunity. I am a parent of two high school students at Martin High School, and we were very excited about this school year, you know? The kids are tired of being at home, and they want to be with their friends. This year, we did school shopping, which we did not do last year. But after three weeks, and every day getting an email about COVID cases, not just me, but my kids are concerned. They feel like Martin doesn't care about us. They said with their own mouth, "Martin has nothing in place for our safety." There's very little social distancing, I went to open house, all the desks were meshed together, um, you know, very little masks, I'm not gonna touch on the masks, because that's, that's a tough issue, I mean, that's real touchy. But I feel like we can do something. It's gotta be something we can do to help. We know that nothing is hu, 100%. We know the science changes, CDC keeps changing the recommendations, nothing. I'm vaccinated, but I still wear my mask, because I know nothing is 100%. But we can do something. My 17-year-old son said, "Mom, I have an idea, why don't we do a hybrid schedule? Why, why can't they do a, why can't we consider do a, doing a hybrid schedule? That would help." I mean, we know COVID is here, we know that. Everybody knows COVID is here to stay. Nothing is 100%, but we can do something. I pray that God touches our hearts and minds to come up with something. We, everybody, the vaccinated against the unvaccinated, but we need to come together, compromise, come up with something. There is a plan that we can come together and come up with something that's gonna help. Thank you.
Okay, so next we have Marisol Fritz. Is Marisol on virtually?
Yes.
Marisol, can you hear me?
Uh, I can, can y'all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, you can start now.
Goodness, okay. Um, all right, let's see. I want to, uh, thank you to the five board members from the last meeting for standing firm, and for upholding your oaths of office to preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States, and of this state. At the end of the day, the districts choosing to defy the governor's executive order, all in the name of politics, are criminals, and will lose in the end. It's so important to view the research yourselves, because many white coats need a refund for their medical degrees, because they are either, number one, clueless, or number two, deliberately and willfully lying to the public, beginning with the fraudulent PCR test. The PCR test was invented by Nobel Peace Prize winner Carrie Mollis, who stated that the PCR invention was never to be used as a diagnostic tool, it is for biomedical research and criminal forensics, not to diagnose an infectious disease, and definitely not to be the main driver of a pandemic, or a casemac in this case. It only reinforces a propaganda narrative to drive the fear, and it's been working. The governors and the health department are fraudulently using the PCR test under emergency use authorization to control we the people, and to validate a state of emergency. Also, the hospitals are using the Delta variant to keep pushing this agenda, but how are they testing for it, when there's not even a test? There are, where are the surge numbers coming from? From the CDC? Huh. There is zero evidence of a patient being diagnosed with the Delta variant. As a registered nurse in the emergency department, the staff shortages are because the hospitals are trying to force their staff into taking an experimental jab or be fired. That's called medical tyranny. And also, everybody should know that the bed capacity is directly related to available staffing. If you don't have enough staff, then here, you can't, you can't staff 100 beds, you only have four nurses. I mean, that's just how it works. And, um, I would also like to briefly just state that I don't appreciate the continued fear mongering by certain board members on, on the board. Thank you, appreciate it.
So the last registered speaker, Naomi Ogul, I hope I'm pronouncing that first name correctly. Okay, is she virtual? Okay. Can you hear me?
I'm here, just a sec. Okay, can y'all hear me?
We can hear you. You can start speaking now.
Okay, um, I'll start with this, first of all, greater love has no one than this, that a person lay down his life for the sake of his friends. You are all my friends, even those jeering at people who you disagree with, including me in the audience. This is biblical, that we love each other, that we respect each other, and that we lay our own desires down for each other, out of a greater love that Christ has given us. So now, I will proceed. Since you, board members, are at our school's mission control center, I come tonight to proclaim, Houston, we have a problem. Oh, I mean, Arlington, we have a problem. You all launched this school year without any COVID safety protocols. Weeks later, this board held a meeting, and with the exception of Mr. Chappa and Mr. Will Banks, you decided to table the discussion of enforcing a mask ma, mandate, much less any, any major safety protocols. We are somewhat repeating history, in a sense, of this. On April 11th, 1970, Apollo 13 set out to land on the moon. Two days after that launch, something went terribly wrong. Fast forward to today, a couple of weeks after the school year was launched, something has terribly gone wrong. Our children are getting sick, COVID is spreading rapidly in our schools. 12, 1,282 cases have been reported since the beginning of this school year. Those infected are spreading it in our schools, taking it home to their family. This tank has blown up. Medical professionals are begging you to help mitigate the spread. The healthcare delivery system for all of our children is at risk, whether it's COVID or other health emergencies. They are running out of space, resources, and manpower. You have a crisis on your hands. The medical professionals are begging you to help. For high school students, you say they can get vaccinated, however, not all of them can do so for medical issues. Uh, people have talked about getting COVID exposure letters this week, so have we, we've had to quarantine because of that. My friend's first-grade child received... My friend's first grade child received a direct exposure letter from school last Thursday. Shortly after, her child became very ill and tested positive with COVID.
Your time is over.
Thank you. Okay, so I will go back for anyone who didn't speak, just to make sure. Do we have some? Who? Okay, thank you. Mr. Gregory?
Yes, I'm on, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. You can start speaking now.
Okay, so I have twin daughters, actually go to Martin High School. They will never wear a mask. That's just, just insanely, has no purpose of anything. From the beginning, the whole mask thing was, wear a mask. They never clarified what was a valid mask. If a mask does not seal on your face, it does absolutely nothing. Did any of you ever think of people that have beards and wearing masks, how they do absolutely nothing? No, you just thought, oh, they have a beard. It is solely just virtue signaling. It does nothing. You cannot make people wear masks that do nothing, and the masks that 99% of people wear do nothing. I see people in places where they don't have to wear masks, and they wear a mask under their nose. It does nothing. But it's going to make kids who do not die from this virus in no way should perform. Actually, anyone healthy does not die from this virus. And you're just perpetuating, you're perpetuating the fear, the fear. All the people that spoke and said, oh, we need to wear masks. You people have worse things to worry about than COVID. Because, well, I must say, you might need to learn a few things in your life because you do not know what's really going on in the world. If you think that little piece of paper or cloth that's for your face is actually doing you any good. So, you know, I think that's about all you can say, but no kids should wear a mask. It's child abuse. I'm done.
Do we have anyone else that's waiting virtually to speak? No, okay. And did Rebecca David show up? Okay. Okay, so I think that we have gotten all of our speakers. At this time, it's 7:49. If we could please take a five-minute break, and everyone, please be back at 7:55. Okay, we will move back to our agenda. I do have to ask, Mr. Chappa, are you there and can you hear us?
I'm here and coming through loud and clear, President Mace.
Okay. So the next item on our agenda is discussion action item, and that is our COVID-19 school operations update. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mace. And this evening, we bring, as we have at board meetings repeatedly, we bring an update on the COVID-19 school operations. This will also include an update related to our virtual school and virtual opportunity for our students. So this brief update, Dr. Hill.
Greetings, President Mace, and Dr. Cavassos. Again, just a brief update on school operations for the, as far as where we are three weeks in, or a little into three weeks in. Just a brief overview, we're going to cover some countywide conditions. We look at current AISD positive cases, look at testing opportunities within the district, look at Tarrant County testing opportunities, COVID-19 vaccination opportunities, and then we'll close out with Dr. Wertz with the update on the AISD virtual learning. So this is information from the Tarrant County website as of yesterday, and one thing, a lot of information here talking about total cases, new cases, deaths, and the community spread still at being high, according to the Tarrant County website. There's also information about the seven-day average of positivity, and right now it's between 20 and 21%. And this slide shows that, as well as some other data. Again, all of this is straight from the county website effective yesterday, or as of yesterday. Within the district, we have 1,155 positive cases that have been reported since school started. 131 of those have been staff members, 1,019 of those are students with five visitors. These cases are updated every day at 5:00 PM, and you can get more detailed information about the campus-specific locations at the, at the COVID dashboard on the AISD website. AISD testing, we still have the testing clinic that's open at 604 New York. We're using the Binax Now antigen test. It's a shallow nasal swab, you get the results in 15 minutes. We're looking to try to expand testing opportunities because that's been a challenge, and we're looking at ways to do that through several different lenses. One is to collect only and notify later versus collect now, wait and test. And so that's one option that we're looking at, possibly evening hours and Saturday hours, and then partnering with the county to, to provide more testing opportunities. And working with the county health department, we understand, I'm sorry, let's go back. And so we'll talk about our testing as far as within the district now. So since the first day of school, or shortly thereafter, we've administered 440 tests on students and staff. 59 of those tests have come back positive, the others have not, and they will continue to make those appointments for tests as, as necessary for students and staff in the district. And working with the county, the county on their website, they've got, had additional 14 or 15 additional testing sites that are available, and I've got those here, and we'll post this, I'm sorry, this link is on the county website as well, which you can access through the AISD COVID-19 dashboard. They are testing locations in Fort Worth, Arlington, Mansfield area, HEB, and others. And again, all of this information is on the county website, as well as a schedule for when those test sites are available. Specifically here in Arlington, the Southeast Courthouse at 700 East Abram will be testing on Thursdays from 8 until noon, and the test type is there as well. Again, all of this information is available on the, on the county website. And as far as vaccine opportunities, the Arlington Fire Department still has their vaccine opportunity available on Cooper Street from, on Monday, Friday, Monday through Friday from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And we're working with an opportunity, potentially having onsite vaccine opportunity for our staff, and once we get the specifics on that nailed down, we will definitely be communicating that out. And so with that, that's the update on that part. I'll take any questions about that, and then we'll transition to Dr. Wertz in the virtual learning update.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. Okay, I don't see any lights for now, so I'll just go ahead and take an opportunity to ask questions, and then if I see any lights come up, we'll go there. For our testing that we're doing, you said 440 tests have been administered. Are we keeping track of those that are calling, trying to get appointments, but we're booked and we can't? Do we know how many people have tried to get tested, but there was, it's too long? Or do we have a waitlist?
So what we do, we're handling that two, one or several different ways. We do have a waitlist, and we are making people aware of these other testing opportunities that we just shared. And what we're also doing is, in that waitlist, we're asking, are you, in case we have a cancellation, how quick can you be here to the testing site? And so if a nine o'clock appointment cancels, and you can be there in 15 minutes, we'll call you. And so we're working that way as well, to try to make sure that we provide every opportunity for those who, who, who need the test.
Okay, so you answered my next question without me even having to ask.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McMurro?
I just wanted to say thank you for looking into the possibility of evening and Saturday offerings. This is a game changer, especially since a lot of our major county sites close at 5:00 or earlier, because we're talking about our students and staff, and they can get their results very quickly with the 15-minute test, but it's the appointment time that we're really striving to improve. So thank you so much for looking into that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. McMurro. Mr. Chappa, do you have any questions?
I do, President Mace.
I'm sorry, did you say no?
No, I said I do.
Okay, go right ahead, Mr. Chappa.
Sure. Dr. Hill, piggybacking on Ms. McMurro's questions, do we have a sense of how quickly we can expand our testing capacity? I know that those are options we're looking at, but do we have a sense of how quickly we can move? And I, I know that that's maybe somewhat difficult to, to answer because it seems like, you know, even regular testing authorities are having trouble getting their hands on the appropriate tests at this time.
So it's a good conversation piece. I've actually had conversations with the county today about opportunities within AISD. The county sites are open, available now. We've looked to our nurses to kind of see what their tolerance is for manning these extended hours. And to be honest with you, they are, they're challenged because they're working the long day and into the evening with the contact tracing, and so to ask them to work an additional four to five hours beyond that, some are up for it, some are not. And so we're just exhausting every opportunity that's, that's available to us.
And if I could add, President Mace, that our, our challenge is real with testing, and it really is a community challenge, because testing is a challenge everywhere in our community and our county. So really what we're seeking, and that's what Dr. Hill, and I appreciate your efforts with Ms. Minnery as well, the Director of Nursing, we're seeking a comprehensive solution to the testing challenge. So we're seeking different types of tests that you can take home that aren't available, by the way, right now. We're seeking contracted services for the county to expand. We're working with the city to see if they can expand their testing facilities with the hours, with Saturdays. So it's, there's not going to be one solution to this, unfortunately, because it's the volume. So that's what they're working diligently on, is a comprehensive solution to meet the needs. And it's, it's not just going to be, unfortunately, with our nurses. That's a, it's a reality with the volume. But we're seeking a comprehensive solution, and I appreciate you, Dr. Hill, for that.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Mr. Chappa, was that all of your questions?
No, I have a few more.
Okay.
And Dr. Hill, and Dr. Cavassos, is there any, have we explored at all the feasibility of, of trying to distribute tests to individual campuses?
Yeah, so that's, we have explored that in, in much detail, and I've had a call with several vendors over the last couple of days, and we're prepared to do that to the extent that we can, but it's, it's a supply issue right now. I've called four different, three different companies within the last two days, and they're three weeks out on back order on the test that we need, so it's, it's a supply issue.
Okay, and, and I heard, it sounds like we're looking at doing another vaccination day opportunity for staff. Are we looking at providing the same opportunity for students again, like we did back in May and June, or is this opportunity going to be limited to just staff?
So we are exploring all possibilities with opportunities. We, we know that we have a great relationship with our Arlington Fire Department, and they're very accommodating, but we also know their challenge too with staffing and things like that. So we are standing up a pop-up clinic, if you will, with our maintenance and food services and transportation and security in, in that compound. And, and that is something Dr. Hill's working on to, to make happen as an option for our employees. And I think you're looking even after hours to run the clinic even till 7:00 PM, I think, to accommodate schedules. We're going to continue those opportunities and exploring those opportunities. Quite frankly, the fire department would want to increase the volume of that, if possible. Of course, this is by choice, it's an individual choice, but we want to make it accessible if somebody wants to take the vaccine, that it's accessible to them.
And understanding that it's a choice, you know, there are certain things you can do to incentivize people to make choices, and, and not talking about students, but is the district, or is the district considering any ways to incentivize our unvaccinated staff members to get vaccinated, or to reward those individuals who've already made the decision to get vaccinated? And we know that the, you know, vaccination rate is an important factor in terms of keeping the numbers down and the spread contained, and, you know, staff interacts with so many students on a day-to-day basis. It seems like the more staff members we can incentivize to get vaccinated, it, it could be a factor in, in helping us slow this down, tap the brakes.
Yeah, so we're, we're looking at, at all options. I would say, right now, the priority option is to make it accessible to the people who want it. And that, that's our priority option right now, that we're really diligently working on, because there is something to be said about access, and when you're at work, and, you know, the flexibility and things like that. But that's what we've been working on as a priority, is the access. To your point, access even at different locations and things like that. We're, we're trying, like I said, this pop-up clinic at our, at our, at our grounds, I guess, complex, because it's the volume of people that have different schedules and come and go, and things like that. So at this point, that is the, the priority. We, we are exploring if, if there's any possibility to get more communication out to individuals, even though I don't think communication is the issue, it's more access. So I think for now, that's the priority, but I, I don't close the door on things such as incentives and things like that for our staff. But I think today, our priority is access.
And I, and I appreciate that, and access and communication are, you know, important ways to, to get people to, to get the shot. You know, I just encourage, to the extent that y'all could or, or are interested in looking at an incentivization program, that you do so with, you know, with all frankly deliberate speed. You know, we meet, we only meet every two weeks, it seems like, and, and, you know, if that's something that the board needs to approve, once there's a proposal on the table, you know, we would have to vote on it, and then it would take up to, you know, four weeks or so or more for individuals, you know, assuming that communication's made and access is provided to, to become fully vaccinated. And so it's a, time is, you know, not necessarily on our side with that. So I would encourage y'all to move on that, if that's a, a direction you're considering going, and let us know as soon as possible if that's something that the administration would be recommending that the board get behind. I do want to have a question, I do have a question, I mean, I think Ms. Minnery would probably be the, the best person to ask.
Thank you.
Available on? I think she's available virtually.
Okay, we'll get her virtually.
Yes, she is.
Ms. Minnery, I, I have a question about how contact tracing is going. I, like every other board member and many of the speakers tonight, you know, we got emails this week about the number of contact trace emails that some of our parents are receiving, and, you know, as a dad of three kids under the age of 12 in AISD myself, we, we've got our fair share of contact tracing notices over the last two and a half weeks. Is, can you explain a little bit about how close contacts are determined in this environment? Is, is the fact that we're not masking, or that in many places, there's a low percentage of students who are masking, just, does that mean if there's a positive case in a classroom, that the entire class is getting notified that they're close contacts?
The, the masking itself doesn't really have anything to do with it, because since we don't have a mask mandate, we can't use the three-foot distance, we have to use the six-foot distance. Really what drives it is that many of the schools are departmentalized, and so the, the students don't stay in one classroom with one teacher all day. And so as they, as they move about the building, and they're not in a regimented into their desk all day, they, they contact each other in such a way that it's not possible to determine who was by who for how long. And since the contact definition, it only requires 15 minutes cumulative throughout the day for the student to become a contact, often, just in terms of the definition, it's not possible to determine a whole lot tighter than the classroom, especially if they've moved in and out of small groups within the classroom. And of course, in secondary, you have the, the same situation, the students are very mobile. And so determining really tightly who was next to who isn't really possible. And so that's, that's one of the reasons. And then also, depending on what campus the child attends, we have campuses that have had more than one case reported several days in a row, and so you're going to get a letter each day when we find out about a new case. And so that's, that's part of what's driving the numbers of letters, is, is campuses that have had more than one case in a fairly short period of time.
So you started out by saying, because we don't have a mask mandate in place. So is, am I assuming from your statements that if we had some sort of masking requirement in place, that that would change the way that we do contact tracing to make it more accurate, for less of a better word?
If, if everyone is masked, the CDC allows in K through 12 education for the contact definition to be someone who is within three feet or less instead of six feet. That wouldn't help us with our mobility situation. So it, but your, your question included, did the mask have anything to do with it? And, and it doesn't, because we're not able to use that change in, in definition, because we're not consistently masking 100%.
Right, but it, it sounds like from what you're saying, that if there were a masking requirement in place, it would, it would change the way that we do contact tracing to make it more narrowly defined?
It, it wouldn't really change, it wouldn't change it in terms of, we would still have to know who was where when. And so as long as the students are really mobile, you're not going to be able, there's a, you know, last year, they were not only socially distanced, but they were also organized in pods and kept in cohorts. And the blending of multiple classes with other classes was significantly less than it has been this year. And so when you add that into the numbers on the campuses being a lot smaller, then you had fewer contacts from a given case than we are right now.
So my concern is that, and this is a concern I've expressed before, is that if we don't get the contact tracing protocols as narrowly defined as we can, we end up in the situation where it seems like we are now, where parents are getting inundated with close contact letters, and that makes them less valuable. And so even though we've made resources available to parents who might be concerned about their child's exposure, they're not really able to meaningfully take advantage of that, like the opportunity we're offering for, you know, those who are close contacts to have a certain number of excused absences and stay home if they feel like that's a precaution that they need to take. You know, so I'm getting questions from some parents that are like, well, I got a, you know, I got a close contact letter on Monday, and if we had stayed home then, you know, my, the end of our staying home would have run out, you know, on day X. But my child's class got a letter on Monday, and another letter on Thursday, another letter the next Monday. And so they don't, you know, it doesn't seem like they're able to really take advantage of that opportunity to be cautious about when their child is or isn't at school because of just the sheer number of times that they're being determined to be close contacts. So is there anything that we are looking at to narrow down and make more accurate the way that we do close contact tracing?
Really, while we have this kind of volume and this kind of mobility, we're probably about as close as we're going to get.
Thank you, Ms. Minnery. I really appreciate your advice.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa.
And I did have a follow-on, Ms. Mays, if that's okay.
No, go right ahead.
Sure. So I would like to revisit the question of masking in schools. And I hope that this is a fulsome discussion, and this is not something that is rejected out of hand. And I think there have been many parents who have emailed us and who spoke tonight who said that there's more that we can do. And I think that there is. And I would like to us to meaningfully explore what that can be. And so I would like to start out just to get something on the table by making a motion to reinstating the student and staff masking protocols that were in place during the last school year.
Mr. Chapa, just so you know, we did have someone else that wanted to speak. Do you want to move forward with your motion now, or do you want to allow them to speak?
I'm happy to let them speak. I don't want my motion to dominate what they were going to push out of the way, what they were going to say.
Okay. Mrs. Fowler.
Thank you, President Mays. Dr. Hill, I was just wondering, I know we have a supply issue right now, as you mentioned, but once that gets better, would it be possible to maybe use the senior nursing students at UTA or TCC that could maybe help us at those clinics?
You know, that's a situation, I was just, pretty of an email today with Ms. Minnery, in contact with the nursing department at UTA. And I think we have something in the works there.
Good, good. That's good to hear. Because I just thought, you know, the senior, they're ready, they're getting ready to go out into their practices. And so maybe they would be willing to donate their time and help us out with that. Thank you.
That's actually happened later this, probably about 4:00 this afternoon.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Fowler. Thank you, Dr. Hill. Just a couple more questions that I have. And then, Mr. Chapa, I'll get right back to you. So what I was hearing Ms. Minnery say was she was talking about volume and mobility. So we've had many emails, many parents and students speak of doing something different as far as passing in the hallways, maybe staggering lunchtimes. Is there anything that we are or can do as a mitigating option of maybe slowing down that mobility for a while?
It's definitely something that we continue to talk about internally, and we can continue to have those conversations and getting principal input and working with others within the district to try to see how we can operationalize that in the midst of all the other requirements that we have for time on task in class and things like that. So, but definitely something we can definitely take and continue to look at.
Okay. And so how long would it take to get back that information?
We can get on it like straight away. And I just don't know what all it would entail, so I don't want to give a false sense of we'll have something by then.
Right.
By a date. But definitely something we can get started on immediately.
Right. So I guess, I guess kind of a conversation that I'm looking at my trusty colleagues is finding out that we've heard some additional mitigating options for weeks, if not tonight. If there's any thought of entertaining any of those thoughts related to, once again, staggered lunches, allowing the students to maybe eat lunch in the hallways, kind of like we did last year, which was very successful. But any mitigating option, including the one, Mr. Chapa, I will get back to you, but I just, I want us to have that discussion. Are there other things that we can think of that might be helpful, just watching the numbers and seeing the things that are happening and listening to our students and our staff and parents?
Yes.
Yes, Mrs. Fowler.
I like the idea of staggering, because I know, especially at Martin, those halls get so crowded, and the lunchroom get so crowded. So maybe if we could do some staggered hall time and lunchtimes, things like that, I think that would be very appropriate to ask. And I think the schools would be willing to work with us on that.
Thank you, Mrs. Fowler. Ms. McMorrow?
I do want to say, I've been reading my emails, and a lot happens in two weeks. We had our board meeting, and we've received hundreds of emails, phone calls, just conversations with great suggestions. I do want to clarify, because there is some confusion out there, we do have COVID protocols, recently revised COVID protocols published on the AISD website. And they are accessible along with not just information about the protocols, but the updated dashboard numbers that are, I guess, updated at 5:00 PM every day. And I really just wanted to remind everyone about that that's watching because there have been some folks that have reached out to me and asked, well, why is it business as usual? Why don't we have any protocols? And then when I send them the document, they go, oh, I didn't know we were back to contact tracing. Oh, I didn't know. So I'm just throwing that out there. We have recently revised and beefed up protocols in addition to the virtual learning option for students who are too young to be vaccinated. I really do appreciate all of the ideas and suggestions. And just, no matter your stance on any protocols, the regard that you all have for our children's safety, it's just, it's wonderful. I particularly like the idea, and I do feel that this should be a campus decision because each campus is different, but I would encourage administrators to consider holding meetings virtually if and when possible. Again, every campus is very different. Every facility is different. And I think that this should really be up to the building administrator. But it is something, you know, we can control the controllables, and that's a big one. That's a big one. I don't think we need to do anything formal as a district to micromanage that. But I just think that, I would like to hope that our building administrators would consider holding meetings virtually if and when possible for faculty. I think that's all for now.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. McMorrow. Mr. Hogg?
Thank you. Thank you, President Mays. Ms. McMorrow, right on. You know, I think you're our newest colleague, and those were very right-on statements about governance, which is where it's going. You know, Ms. Mays, I understand, I get lots of, there's lots of ideas and lots of things out there. That is not for a board to decide. We are, besides Ms. McMorrow as a professional educator, but even then, we have individuals that run our campuses. And to be able to make some of those decisions from where they're coming, what they're going. And as Ms. McMorrow said, we have protocols. We have some protocols in place. Staff worked long and hard on the summer to determine what was in place, what was needed in place. And I think staff, you know, they, we get up here and sometimes get a little heated and fight a little. But I still, you know, respect for our colleagues. But I think staff is worried, like a lot of people, listen, everyone's worried about safety of students. No one says they aren't. But I was disappointed last week, and myself included, not a single one of us talked about student achievement during the COVID protocols. And when we start thinking about that, you know, that's as big of a concern as anything else we're talking about. You know, the Texas Education Commissioner just came out and said the impact on elementary and middle school students in terms of literacy levels has been nothing short of catastrophic. At a 10-year loss is what some people are projecting. And Commissioner Murath has looked at what's happened in some other countries when things like this happened years ago. And it's a concern. And I know, talking with a lot of senior staff members, our superintendent, it's a concern of what's happening to our students on these long-term levels, of what is truly happening. And listen, it's a concern for us because we saw our scores from last year. And they're concerning. So every little protocol, and I think staff pulled a lot of protocols last year, and I think the comment was, some of them are just really aren't that effective. And it's true. You know, I think it's been proven, some of the disinfecting things don't work. This is more of an aerosol. It started off as a touch and different pieces. And I wasn't going to say much tonight, but I have to just bring those up tonight of continuing to make sure adult decisions don't affect student outcomes. And in continuing that we are a governing board and not a managing board. I've got other comments, but I'll stay focused on that. Is that what, that's what we're talking about. There was some discussion over, you know, reward for vaccines. I can't support that. I can, you know, I believe in access. I believe in if you want to receive the vaccine, let's make it easy for you. By all means. It's a family choice. It's what you want to do. I appreciated that if students wanted to get it, their parents had to show up with them and attend, awesome. It's a family choice to get that. And we did, I guess, provide a reward by allowing staff members to go and do that, provide hours to that from that side. And I think we had a pretty high percentage rate of encouraging vaccines. But there are, we all know people that immediately got it. You know, my mom immediately got her third booster, quickly, fast, faster than she probably could. She feels like, she probably don't want to say in this, I'm probably violating some of her, but she told me, from that side. But then we also know people that work at the hospitals, that work at Cooks, that have been very adamant against it. You know, whether you agree with them or not, it's still their family's choice. And I think our staff, Dr. Hill, Dr. Cavassos, you have done a really strong job of providing access and communication. And I commend you on that to get that level because it is a fine line, and it's a very difficult decision. If you look at most companies, most organizations, they are strong, the word is they're strongly encouraging, which is fine. That's okay. That's an okay way to do it. Because the word mandate's a pretty tough word. It's pretty tough to require someone. And that's when you start getting into overreach. So that's all I have, Ms. Mays. I'll leave it at that from some comments.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hogg. And just to make clear what I was saying about the protocols is, the COVID protocols, we voted on it. So I do feel like discussing it is part of governing, just to be clear on what I was saying. And I think the protocols are also put in place to make sure that our students can show up and learn, which directly leads to student achievement. So I just see a overlapping right there. But I appreciate your comments. Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, President Mays, and thank you, Mr. Hogg, for your comments. I agree with you. I've been watching the numbers, and I've been alarmed since over the summer with what our commissioners said and what we've seen in terms of the cost of this pandemic on our kids' learning, and especially on math in the younger grades. It has been catastrophic. And that's why I think it's very important that we do. And I appreciate Ms. Mays' comment that we look at everything possible that we, as a district, can do to make it as safe as possible. Because I feel we've got to make it safe for as many kids to come in person and learn in person to mitigate that learning loss. I agree with you, Mr. Hogg, on the hygiene theater. We've learned a lot over the last 18 months of what works and what doesn't work. And the hygiene theater was definitely in the one that category that was all show and no gain. But, and also appreciate your thoughts that we're not a managing board. I think it's important that, while, yes, Ms. Mays, that we are the ones voting for, required to vote for the COVID protocols, I think I would like for us to have a discussion, but also give staff adequate chance to weigh in on what's doable and what's not doable. So I welcome the discussion, but I would also want to make sure that we couch it in a way that we can get the recommendation from the experts, and that's our operations team at our campuses. So, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. So any other questions or discussions? Once again, I am asking the administration to please look at some of the suggestions made by our students and by our staff of finding a way where there is not so much, if we're not masked, then we need to practice social distancing. And how can we do that? And I know that there's a way we can because we did it last year. So I'm definitely not telling you how to do it, but I am asking to please look into a way that we can practice better social distancing. And the reason why we're bringing that up and even talking about the COVID protocols is, you know, since school has started, you know, we had our discussion before school. Now school's been in place for a couple of weeks. We see what's happening. We hear people asking, please help ensure that I can feel like my child is safe. We hear teachers asking, please make sure that I'm safe as I'm showing up every day. And I know the desire, from what I've heard, is that the children be able to come in person and learn, which I strongly want that. We talked about that greatly last year. Can't wait to bring the kids back to come and learn because we know in the classroom, student achievement will go up. So what I'm saying is, whatever we're doing, not discounting that, we voted on those protocols. But I am saying that things have changed. And what can we do to continue to try to, once again, exhaust all of our options to mitigate continued spread, to mitigate sending our kids to places that say that they're already full? So that's all I'm asking. What else can we do? At the end of the day, are we doing all that we can do to help mitigate? That's my, that's my question and my request.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. Mr. Chapa?
Yes, President Mays.
You have the floor.
Yeah, I would like to just, if you'd like me to say my motion again, I can.
Yes, for the record.
We can proceed. Sure. So I move that we reinstate the masking protocols that were in place for staff and students during the last school year.
Okay. So we have a motion. Do I have a second? Okay. I don't see a second. So that motion fails. So next, we have, who's coming up? Dr. Wertz? Thank you, Dr. Hill, for asking, answering all of our questions. Dr. Wertz?
President Mays.
Oh, I apologize. Mr. Chapa?
Sure. So I have seen several school districts across the state implement so-called opt-out masking protocols. And so Plano is an example of that, where essentially the district changes the default from just anybody does what they want to, the default is that masks are required, but that individual families who have a medical or other reason, a philosophical objection to wearing the mask for their individual child can place a, request an exemption for the masking protocol for their child. And then that becomes the new default as an opt-out system. This sort of avoids the issues of the individuals not feeling like they have a choice over this. But it's also very likely, and statistically in the districts that have done it, it dramatically increases the number of people wearing masks because, for one thing, staff, it encourages mask-wearing among staff because it has become sort of an employment protocol. mask wearing among staff because it has become sort of an employment protocol. But also, it gives teachers the ability, because we've heard from several teachers where they see their students get out of the car in the morning, they are wearing a mask, so presumably the parents are supportive of that. But then when the student gets inside, decides to take it off because their friends aren't wearing it. And this would give teachers the authority to adhere to those protocols that the parents would want the kid to follow while they're in class. And again, you know, I just think it's a mistake to view masks as, as long as they're not 100% effective, then we shouldn't do anything at all. It's all about risk mitigation. And if it reduces the risk of spread, then it's something worth doing. And with masks, what the overwhelming medical evidence shows and the overwhelming number of doctors at the leading children's hospitals across the country, who this week, the presidents of almost all of the children's hospitals across the country, put out a plea about masks, and then the Cook's Children's Doctors last night had a pretty, it's gone viral statement about it as well. But masks are only as effective as the number of people wearing them. And so anything that could increase, I think this is a tool that would help us do some more mitigative steps. It could, based on what Ms. Menderly said, with some other tweaks to our protocols, help us have more effective and accurate contact tracing. So parents aren't getting inundated with these contact trace letters so they can make more meaningful decisions about when they're going to keep their kids home. And I do want to just, I do respectfully disagree with Mr. Hogg saying that at our last meeting discussion, there was no discussion of student achievement. If I wasn't clear, I apologize. But the whole impetus for me wanting to do this is, is I do agree that last year was suboptimal for many of our students, even though we did have some success stories last year. It was not an ideal environment. Virtual education is, even before the pandemic, I was not a fan of because it has been shown to not be as effective of an educational option for students of certain backgrounds that we serve in this district. But the important thing to me is to get students in class, in person, as much as possible this year with a normal learning experience. And quite frankly, I don't think a mask meaningfully detracts from that experience. I mean, many of the arguments we've been hearing were arguments made last year when we didn't have schools open for some part of the year at all, at the very beginning of the year. And now the same arguments are being said that that would be a consequence of masking. And I don't believe that that's true. But with an opt-out procedure, people who do believe that way could request an exemption. I think the masking, the percent of students and staff wearing masks would go up. That would provide meaningful, more meaningful mitigative efforts than what we're currently doing now. And so I would ask that we consider an opt-out, you know, changing our default masking protocols to masks, but offering individual families, students and staff, the ability to specifically request an exemption.
Okay. Mr. Chapa has made a motion. Is there a second? Was that a motion? Or was that a suggestion?
Yes, ma'am. It was sort of motion with discussion.
Yeah, can you repeat your exact motion, Mr. Chapa?
Sure. My motion is that we, my motion is that the district adopt a default masking requirement with a potential for individual exemptions.
Okay. Yeah, one more time, Mr. Chapa, for Ms. Benjamin, recording.
I move that the district adopt a default masking requirement with individual exemptions. The opportunity for individual exemptions.
Thank you. She got it. Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, President Mays. And my colleague, Mr. Chapa, made a lot of cogent points about the ability to maximize in-person instruction with the addition of a mask mandate. So I would like to second his motion. And after the second, I would also like to make an amendment.
Okay. So we have a motion by Mr. Chapa, a second by Mr. Will Banks. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Fowler?
Thank you, President Mays. If I could read this, please.
Sure.
Sir, are you making an amendment?
I seconded. I will be making an amendment, though.
Mrs. Fowler?
Yes, may I read this? "I grew up in a family that listened and believed in science. My father was an M.D., a physician and a surgeon. So we listened to doctors and nurses and those in the health field. I do believe if my dad were still alive, he would recommend masks. Regardless of whether or not I believe masks help keep us safe, I cannot in good conscience go against our governor. Laws must be obeyed whether we like those laws or not. In addition to the governor's law that school districts cannot enforce masks, and although I do not wish sickness on anyone, right now, AISD has approximately only 1% of our students and staff that have tested positive for COVID. Again, I don't take that 1% lightly, but we are in better shape than we were last year. It is my recommendation that we continue to ask those in our schools to wear a mask, wash their hands, and try to stay distance. This is all we can control right now."
Mr. Hogg?
Thank you, President Mays. And Ms. Fowler, well said. Beyond, I'll look forward to voting against a mask mandate again. And however many times you want to amend it and change it, or make motions and then have them die from no seconds, and then bring them back in different forms, you know, we can amend it to an opt-in motion if we, I guess we could amend it that way, where you can opt into a mask, which is what we have right now. You can opt in. You can wear a mask in family choice with that. Ms. Fowler, you made the right point. So I don't need to say a whole lot. I look forward to voting no on this again. And when we talk about student achievement, when you start asking mask mandates, you start affecting elementary students' phonics learning. You start affecting social distance when you don't have stations in a classroom for an elementary. I've got a second grader. I have a wife who's a teacher. I have a grand, her grandmother's a teacher, and we have the means. We've hired tutors to help her with her reading. We read to her constantly. We take that. Everyone should be worried about every second grader in this district because they lost half a kindergarten, they lost almost all first grade. And guess what? If we don't get them caught up by third grade, we got bigger issues. So however many ways you want to splice it and turn it and keep your narrative of just masks as the only option, that's fine. I look forward to voting no against it again.
Mrs. Fowler?
Thank you, President Mays.
Mrs. Fowler, hold on. You turn her mic back on, please. Thank you. You're on.
But once again, I don't think as a district, we should be going against the governor's law. I mean, I don't think as a district, we can say, everyone else needs to make sure they follow the laws, but this law we don't like, so we're not going to do it. And whether I believe that masks are good or not, that's not the issue. The issue is, the governor has said we cannot mandate masks. If we go against the governor, we set ourselves up for lawsuits. We set ourselves up for a lot of bad press. But regardless of that, we cannot sit here and tell students, you need to do this, you need to do that, to tell citizens, you need to do this, you need to do that. But we pick and choose which laws we're going to follow. I think as long as the governor has said there cannot be any mask mandates, I don't think we have the right to go against the governor. And as I said, whether I believe in masks or not, it's not the issue. The issue is, the governor has said we cannot mandate masks. Until the governor changes his mind, then we might have a discussion and we may change up what we think we need to do. But as long as the governor has said you cannot mandate masks, I don't think we can do it.
Can I respond to that, President Mays?
Yes, Mr. Chapa.
Thank you, President Mays. I mean, those are great points that would have been made against my motion if it had been another motion to mandate that everybody do it all the time. And I still would disagree that the governor has the authority under the executive order to prevent us from doing that because he hasn't suspended in the executive order the Education Code. There have been several districts across the state that have modified, have put in place mask mandates using the Education Code, which is what this district did last year. And no court has said that the governor has the authority to supersede the Education Code. There are several court cases that have been filed on that point, and they have not been successful in preventing districts from exercising their rights under the Education Code because it's not a regulatory statute, certainly not something that is passed by local governments. And, you know, quite frankly, the governor does not, I'm surprised to hear some of the arguments made by people who are normally champions of local control and separation of powers because the governor does not have the authority to, just by executive order, declare what the law is regardless of what the legislature has enacted. And here, the Education Code was enacted by the legislature. The governor has no authority to say what that law is. That's the province of courts. It's the basic separation of powers principles. It's entirely possible that if we exercise our rights under the Education Code, that the attorney general could bring a lawsuit, or somebody else could bring a lawsuit. So far, those lawsuits have not been successful. So the threat, I mean, maybe I discount this threat because, a little because I'm an attorney, but people threaten lawsuits all the time and say that they know what the law is, and they're just wrong. And I think that's the case here until a court says otherwise. The executive order certainly doesn't, and in my opinion, cannot supersede the Education Code. The other thing is, is that even if the executive order were valid, a opt-out system allows any family who believes that it infringes on their rights for their child to wear a mask, even though I'll point out that dozens of federal courts have said that there's no constitutional right to not wear a mask, and have upheld school districts imposing mask requirements all through COVID last year. But setting that aside, anybody can opt out if they think it's an infringement of their rights. So it is not a mandate per se. So that's another layer that the governor would have to get past, or the attorney general, despite what he might say on Twitter, would have to get through in a court of law to say that we don't have those rights under the Education Code as a school district. And I do believe in, you know, I also have three elementary-age children. My wife was also a teacher. And I recognize at this point that Mr. Hogg and I just have a fundamental disagreement about these things. But at the end of the day, we've got to do something because I got the sense from Ms. Mays's comments, I don't want to speak for her, but I do feel like at this point, given the numbers that Dr. Hill put up earlier, what our own dashboard is showing, what the Texas state numbers are showing, is that this, the last two weeks has been a significant deterioration in the COVID situation. Community spread is increasing very heavily. The numbers in Tarrant County have increased every week. Last week was the highest number of cases since the winter surge in Tarrant County. The positivity rate was starting to plateau. It's starting to go back up. The hospitalization numbers are on essentially a vertical spike. I think we do have an obligation as a big part of this community to do what we can to keep schools open and mitigate the spread in our schools. And I don't think that any of the legal objections that people want to cite are valid, especially for an opt-out system. This is a mechanism that I think would pass muster in court. In fact, you know, going back to the Education Code, and I don't want to, you know, don't want to have our attorney get up there, but I mean, we've been advised that we have the authority under the Education Code to mandate masks. So we can't keep pointing to the governor's executive order as some kind of cover for this. If you're philosophically opposed to masks, I can understand that. I disagree with you. But let's not, especially in the face of an opt-out proposal like I'm making, say that the governor's order also prevents that, or that it would have some sort of, you know, seriously deleterious effect on student achievement because I don't think the evidence would show that either.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. So right now, we're in discussion from a motion and a second that was made. One thing that I would like to say, and I will make it very brief, I don't need to, I don't need to put on a show, but I'm going to, I'm going to share exactly what I have done and why I have come to my decision so that everybody would know when I do vote. Heard information from both sides, and I have taken the time to think about everything that's being said. And no matter which way I vote, doesn't mean I'm discounting the way another side feels. But what it does mean is that the position that I am currently in is a position to help create policy that keeps all of our students, all of our staff, safe. What I've said this evening is all of our options for mitigating continued spread. I saw our students down here today performing, and it warmed my heart. It warms my heart to see the kids going into the school building happy because they're seeing their friends, they're seeing their teachers. I don't want that to stop. But what I am seeing is that if things continue the way they are, that very well may stop. And as we saw last year, it impacts and affects student achievement. With an opt-out, you know, if we say, we want you to wear your mask, you need to wear your mask, if there's a reason why you choose as a parent and you have a reason to opt out, we will honor that. But at the end of the day, my faith, as has been discussed this evening, part of my discussion is looking at the facts. I have made personal phone calls to directors at Cook's Children. I have made personal phone calls to teachers that are in the classroom. I have spoke to students, including those in my neighborhood, at the bus stops, wearing their masks and some not, and listening to everything that they said. And part of my job is to take that feedback and then make the decision that I feel, I'm not voting for Mr. Will Banks, for Mrs. Fowler, for Mr. Hogg. Everybody can vote the way that they want to. I'm voting for the students and the staff and the community of Arlington ISD. There is no perfect answer that's going to make everybody excited. So I'm just hoping that we can all get together, understand the passion and the attentions that hopefully that you have and that we have, that says we care about our students, we care about our staff, and here's the way that we can show that. I pray daily that this just goes away. I pray daily that sooner than later, we're not talking about COVID. I do that on a daily basis. I will continue to do that. So with that being said, there's a motion, there's a second. At this time, please vote. I don't see a light. Mr. Will Banks, do you need to make, I didn't see a light. Mr. Hogg?
That's okay, President Mays. With the addition...
Okay.
I believe one of my colleagues would like legal counsel to consult.
Yes, I do.
And I'd be fine with that if we could adjourn to closed session for legal counsel.
Before? Okay, that's fine. Mr. Hogg's going to make a comment before we go with legal counsel. Mr. Hogg?
Yeah, thank you, President Mays. Ms. Fowler said it right. And, you know, I'm sure there's other good attorneys around that have a lot of points. But we also have a governor who used to be attorney general, and we have an attorney general who are both pretty proficient attorneys. Texas Supreme Court's made a ruling. We're taking an unnecessary risk for an opt-out. So you're, I mean, what's the definition of opt-out? I would like, before anyone considers an opt-out, what are all the reasons? What's the process? How do you opt out? We can't just make a generic term. We don't vote on anything else in here without actually seeing how some things are done and understanding. So what's the opt-out? Is it just religious? Is it a parent choice? Is it the parent says, you opt out? Do they have to fill out a form? What language is the form's going to be written in? What are we, we're mandating when we don't need to mandate. We're taking an unnecessary risk to somehow someone feels like they get a win on masks. Maybe there's no legal recourse. Maybe not. There's a chance. Maybe not. But there's still a governor's executive order, whether you agree with it or not. The attorney generals put a list up of saying, here's districts that are violating. No one's kept from wearing a mask. No one has kept from wearing a mask. So now what we're doing is we're saying, you know what? If your parents aren't really involved, wear one. You know, if your parents are involved in your life, they can probably opt you out. What are we doing for all of our kids?
Children are going to die.
I'm still speaking. I'm not done. We have a governor's order. So then, if you're going to mandate masks, what type of mask? Are we, are we going to still allow gators? Because we have in the past. Let's see. I think we've all been to Ranger Games recently. There's no mask required. There's no mask required for, so are we going to require masks, but then the whole wrestling team has to opt out? Or the volleyball team has to opt out? In my opinion, we're creating unnecessary work. We're creating unnecessary problems that our staff has had enough work to do at the start of school to then all of a sudden say, deal with all these opt-out paperwork from what we're doing. You can opt in. You have the family choice to opt in. I can do nothing and I look forward to legal counsel in the back and nothing but say, I'm opposed to a mandatory mask with an opt-out procedure, which gets us back to exactly where we are right now. Unless there's games being played and that opt-out is so difficult, it's so hard, but this is a softer way to do it, from an original motion that just came up to mandate mask and didn't even get a second. I didn't even call and say, can we do that? Is that enough of a motion to bring something else back up when it just died? I'll let it go and I'll vote against it again, and I, I hope my colleagues do too. And then knowing that one of my colleagues isn't even here and making some guesses how he would guess, but I don't know how colleagues are always going to vote. If only six of us here, there's another problem with that. Thank you.
Okay. So at this time...
President Mays, can I just respond before we adjourn?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chapa, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Yes, President Mays, I would just like to very briefly respond to some of the points that Mr. Hogg made before we adjourn because I feel like our discussion is going to take a different direction once we do so.
Can we discuss that in legal or is that something we needed to discuss?
It's not a legal, it's not a legal point.
Okay, then please, go ahead.
Sure. So I, Mr. Hogg raises some valid concerns and to his point of governance, this is a generalized motion to develop a policy. We delegate the authority to the superintendent all the time. And I think our favorite language, at least at Tasby, the Tasby policies that follow this is to delegate to the authority to the superintendent to implement this policy and develop administrative regulations to carry it into effect. And we do that all the time. But here, I don't even think it's that difficult because we have a pretty ready at hand source of what the masking protocols would look like because we did it just last year. And so I imagine that would be the initial template that anyone would start with and then go from there. And my idea with this is not to play games and make it so hard that people can't exercise their right to get out. We already have, exceptionally, allowed exceptions to masking last year. And we also continue to allow exceptions to vaccination requirements for the vaccines that students normally have to get to go to school. This is not some sort of insurmountable option that's coming out of left field. This is something that we were just doing a few months ago. And I think there are some valid questions on what the contours of the option look like to opt out, but we do have at hand protocols that we just used and we have lots of experience with dealing with exemptions for a host of reasons.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. At this time, where should we go? So at this time, we're going to break for a legal counsel and we will return when we are done. Mr. Chapa, can you hear us?
Loud and clear.
Okay. Okay, so we have returned back from legal counsel. Before we left, I think we had a motion on the floor from Mr. Chapa, a second by Mr. Willbanks. We've had our discussion, so at this time, please vote. We will do roll call vote once again. Mr. Chapa, we will start with you.
Thank you, President Mays. Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
David Willbanks, I vote yes.
Melody Fowler, I vote no.
Louie Hogg, I vote no.
Kishma Mays, I vote yes.
Sarah McMurro, I vote no.
So there are six present, three for, three against. So the motion does not pass because we do not have a majority vote. Okay. So...
Ms. Mays?
Yes?
Can we have...
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay. Let me get your mic on. There you go.
Thank you. I just wanted to state that legal, legal pieces aside, and I just feel like things are changing by the day, not just with our COVID cases, but with who has the authority to do what and who's questioning what. After much reflection about a mask mandate with opt-out, opt-out options for religious, health, and philosophical reasons, I've come to the conclusion that each person, whether it be a staff member or a student, you know, whose parents bring them to school each day, they would be able to wear a mask if they wish and they would not be able to wear a mask if they don't wish if we passed this type of mandate. Essentially, I don't believe that it would be a mandate at all. I personally, and I said this at the last meeting, I send my second grade son, who's too young to receive the vaccine, and virtual learning is not what's best for him. Not only would he not have the supervision at home, but he is high functioning on the autism spectrum. I'm proud to say that I send him to school in a mask each day. And, you know, I personally encourage it, especially for those of us who cannot receive or wish not to receive the vaccine. I truly do not feel that sub-mandate would make much of a difference in mitigating the spread. I do, however, believe that masking up does have some efficacy. And I have read different studies on how much efficacy and the difference between an N95 mask and a cloth mask. But I just truly wanted to state to everyone watching that this is not an easy decision for myself or any of us. We are all parents on this dais, all parents on this dais. And sometimes we don't always agree on the how, but we all care very, very much about our children's safety. We really do. And I just wanted to let everyone watching know that that is at the top of all of our priority list, even though we don't always agree on the how. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McMurro. With that being said, and Mr. Chapa, if you want to speak anymore, I can see you on all the screens, you can raise your hand. Just don't want to miss you like I did last time. But I would like to say this once again as president, and the discussions that we have had with each of my board members, I know that the passion is there from the community, the passion is there from both sides. The discussion that I've had and Mr. Hogg VP, Mrs. Fowler Secretary, as officers of this board, 100% are advocating to wear a mask. 100% advocating and providing access to get vaccinated if that is your choice. Me personally, my goal always has been and will continue to be to make decisions that I feel are in the best interest of the students for student achievement for Arlington ISD and discussion with administration to continue to have those discussions as to how we can make sure that we are keeping our students and our staff the safest that they can be to continue to educate our students. So with that being said, I'm going to move on in the agenda. And the next thing that we have on our agenda, yes, is Dr. Wertz to discuss our virtual learning. Dr. Wertz?
I'm looking at Mr. Chapa, but I need to see the slides.
Oh, I apologize.
Thank you. Well, here, this evening, I'm here to provide you with an update about virtual learning and how that's going. And just to remind everybody that we have a couple of models of virtual learning that's been in play over the last several days and going into the next several weeks. We started off with a self-guided or asynchronous model that started on August 25th and that will continue through this Friday, tomorrow, September 3rd, at which point we will move to a synchronous environment beginning on Tuesday, September 7th. And this will be continually provided six weeks by six weeks until it's decided that it's no longer necessary. We will be providing this in a non-concurrent, in a non-concurrent fashion, which means we will not have teachers teaching their classrooms in person and students online at the same time. Students who are taught virtually will be taught with a teacher directly virtually on CSO if it's pre-K through two and on Canvas if it's three through six. And of course, we do have stricter requirements in terms of attendance of students. We do ask that they engage every day in the blocks of learning that are actually established by the schedule and that they do so with their cameras on so that they're present. We will be providing services for students who have special needs, dyslexia, GT, or bilingual ESL. There are some limitations around special education because we are required to meet FAP and not every program can be met virtually. FAP cannot be met virtually for every program. And so we've been working one-on-one with those families to provide them with the best options to meet their child's needs. Right now, our current enrollment, it's shifting a little bit here and there, but it's approximately 1,922 students. We do have a capacity of around 2,072. It's dropped a little bit since actually earlier today. We have enrolled 22 students from the waitlist and we have 36 students that are waitlisted that don't have any records in Arlington ISD. And then we've had 33 families who initially enrolled, who withdrew from the virtual program to go back to face-to-face. There are a total of 92 teachers and we have three virtual learning principals that are overseeing specific grade level bands to support teachers and staff who are actually working with students online. And our class sizes are currently approximately 20 to 1. This week, we held teacher orientation and professional learning to prepare for the launch of synchronous learning next week. The orientation was held yesterday on September 1st and then we began training yesterday and we continued training today, which included six hours of synchronous face-to-face training as well as some pre- and post-activities to help support teachers as they prepare for teaching and learning next week. I personally attended all of the training yesterday just to observe and see how it was going. And I just want to extend my gratitude to the team who put together a training to really try to customize for the needs of teachers, many of whom are teaching in this environment for the first time. And so it was done in a very short time, so we appreciate their efforts. During that training, we focused specifically around the four best practices. We focused on how to deliver that, utilize those best practices in the virtual environment, how to engage students, how to ensure that their social and emotional needs are being met. And then we also went over specific operational things such as grading, taking attendance and things like that. On Wednesday, yesterday, teachers made contact with their students' families. And tomorrow, there will be a virtual event, we're calling it Meet the Teacher, where we will host a meeting for all virtual parents and their students to receive specific information, as you can see noted on the slide, in that we will be covering things such as how parents can stay involved and be engaged in the process, what they can expect in terms of routine weekly communication from the teachers. That's going to be providing instruction to their child, the learning schedule, how to access the courses. We'll also be talking to them specifically around grading and attendance requirements, dress codes, student code of conduct, and then how to order a meal. This is just a quick shot of, a quick slide that shows you specifically what the synchronous learning schedule looks like for the different grade level bands. As you can see, there is breaks that are built in throughout the day, opportunities for kids to move around, but it is a school day. It's not where you receive maybe an hour of instruction, then you're off on your own. They will have face-to-face time with their teacher most of the day. We will be providing grab-and-go meals. Parents will need to make a request online each day for their child to receive a meal. This is in order for us to comply with federal guidelines because we are providing free meals to all students this school year. So a parent can go online, order the meal for their child, swing by their homeschool every day at 2:00 and they will be able to pick up their meal for their children. There will be a virtual opt-out period on this, for the second six-week period that's coming up. So as you know, we currently have about 1,900 students that are in the program. Those students will be given first priority to stay in the program and they will have an opportunity to opt out if they choose to go back to in-person. Once we work through the opt-out period, anybody that's on the waitlist who would like to be part of the program, depending on space capacity, we will enroll them in the virtual program and we will continue to do this on a six-by-six-week period. And that's kind of where we are. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Dr. Wertz. Mrs. McMurro?
Thank you so much, Dr. Wertz. Talk about building a plane as you fly it. That's exactly what you and your staff are doing, human resources. This is truly a team effort. A couple of questions that I had, the parents who realize that their child is on the waitlist, they have been notified that they are on the waitlist, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And is there, is there communication as to how far along they are on the waitlist or is it just a flat, a flat waitlist?
I can't speak to whether they spoke to where they fall on the waitlist. What, it isn't an open enrollment, meaning like you can't come from the waitlist and go into the program in the middle of the six-week period.
Right.
The doors, we've put a boundary around that so that learning is consistent. And then when we open up opportunities to fill space, the second six-week period, any space, we'll just work our way through the waitlist, but I'd have to go double-check with the team. They are, we do have timestamps in terms of when people submitted their requests because they did it by email, but I can't speak to what the specifics of the conversation are, but I can find out.
Right. And I realize that there will be some families at the end of the first six weeks who choose to go back in-person.
That's right.
And then vice versa, from in-person to virtual. So I appreciate that. One question about the schedule. I know that many of our students, and it's very commendable that we are, you know, continuing gifted and talented enrichment, when they receive those additional supports, GT, special ed support, is this occurring during intervention and enrichment time mainly?
That's a good question. No. So if you are a special education student, your services are being provided outside of the schedule. So it's in the afternoon, after-school hours are over. And the reason being is because the teachers that are providing those services are working with students at the school. And so we want to make sure that they, that the students that are actually physically at school aren't also impacted. If you're receiving GT services, those are being done by the Texas Performance Standards Projects. We're providing those projects. Students can work on them at their own pace, but they're not necessarily going to be graded like you would normally see in a general ed environment. Bilingual services are being provided by the actual direct teachers that are in the classroom.
That's wonderful because it's delicate. You know, we've talked about it multiple times before, in-person learning is what's best, but, and you know, it's what I feel is best for my child, but I really have to zoom out of my household because we heard from multiple families before we flipped the switch to offer virtual, that this is what they are wanting at this time, especially for their children who are too young to receive the vaccine. And I appreciate that those services are for differentiation and for meeting IEP and 504 requirements are still happening. I just don't want our students missing out on their core content time. So I'm very appreciative that we're honoring that and thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McMurro. Mrs. Fowler?
Thank you, President Mays. This is wonderful. Thank you for all of this work, Dr. Wertz. I know you all have worked hard on this. Let me ask for the attendance part. If there's a student who has signed up and then is kind of sketchy in his or her attendance, will that person be asked to go back to the classroom at the end of his six weeks or what's the procedure for that?
Interesting you say that. There are some new rules that are coming out around that, where students who have chronic absenteeism in a virtual environment, the district can ask them to return to in-person. So yes, we will be monitoring attendance and kids who are not being successful in the classroom environment and/or are chronically absent, we will work on that with their parents.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Fowler. Mr. Hogg?
Thank you. Thank you, President Mays. And Ms. Fowler, you were asking exactly what I had, the concern of those students that not only attendance, you know, some students thrive in virtual, a lot don't, right? And so, Dr. Wertz, and I know, and let me commend staff, you put together a, and I know you all have been working on it a long time, but making a quick pivot really fast, even faster on this virtual. And I truly believe you put it together faster and I truly believe it's a better virtual learning than some of the others. I look at some of our other districts who are bringing in an outside firm in Austin to provide the learning. Well, none of those teachers are trained on what we're trying to do from a curriculum standpoint. And then you get to, when they do then come back to the classroom, what happens to them then on that achievement side? So I commend you all for doing that. So pulling them back, is it just attendance or is it if they're not achieving? I'm trying to figure out the correct word, achieving what they're, not even participating, maybe participating is the right word, but achieving a learning lesson? Like teachers know if someone's learning or not at that moment. then on that achievement side? So, I commend you all for doing that. So, pulling them back, is it just attendance, or is it if they're not achieving? I'm trying to figure out the correct word, achieving what they're, not even participating, it may be participating is the right word, but achieving a learning lesson? Like, teachers know if someone's learning or not at that moment of virtual.
There are some new laws, there are some new rules that are coming out with Senate Bill fifteen. We're just waiting for the governor to sign it. Once that happens, and that rule, those rules are interpreted, there is some language in that statute that specifically articulates when a district can require a student to return to in-person. And so, we'll specifically identify how we're going to address those once the statute is signed. We're just waiting on that. We had a meeting with the commissioner today where that was actually articulated.
And fifteen could affect us on funding that went through, I mean?
Yeah. So, it's a little complicated.
I mean, they just concluded today, so, this evening.
And so, commissioner still has some rulemaking authority and things like that, that he cautioned everyone that he's still processing. But, that is one avenue, you know, that we could receive some funding. There are a lot of rules around it and complications, just to be clear. So, we're going to process that. He hasn't signed it yet. It seems like he will, the governor will. So, once he does rulemaking and all that, I will say on the attendance and more on the performance, Mr. Hogg, as you were mentioning, you know, it's important for us to get to root cause of some of these things, just like if you were in the classroom. I mean, there may be some issues that, in extra support interventions that need to take place that could help a student be successful. We want to be mindful of those things as well, and not just, you know, just quickly say, you're not making it, you failed something. So, it's that whole process of trying to make sure that we're supporting a student to be successful. Ultimately, though, if it's not working in that environment, then, yes, we will be making those decisions. Again, the rulemaking still has to happen with the commissioner as well.
Thank you for that, and I know we're working through that. And so, I think we need to hear that once we get that rulemaking of where it comes in. And let me ask, Dr. Wertz, I've heard many of the teachers say, the only thing that's keeping me sane in this virtual learning, and they've all said it's way better than last year, right? It's not the dual. The only thing that's keeping them sane are the amazing principles that we have, helping guide them and focus on that with that. And some of these teachers, I think we have to know, didn't volunteer, right? That's a hard, that's a hard side from where they're coming. So, help me understand, are we offering them extra support, extra? Because now, they're in essence having to learn an entire new, I don't want to say model of teaching, but you know, it's different. It's just very different than what they've, some of these teachers that have been in the classroom twenty years, it's just a different way to get to a student. So, are we offering them, I know we've got some training, but are we offering them extra support on potentially grading, extra tech support, extra some of those things is what I'm asking?
Yes, and there's, so there's, we have a person that we are assigning to serve as the instructional coach of those teachers in the virtual environment. We have the awesome principals that were assigned, who are quite dynamic, as you mentioned.
Heard nothing but amazing things about them so far.
Really great. And then, also, we have our curriculum staff that'll be working to support those teachers with office hours, so that we can be there not only when they're doing PLCs if needed, but also so they can reach out whenever they need to, if they get stuck even in the middle of the day with their, when they're teaching their students. So, we try to wrap services around them to support them in the process. We do realize it's a heavy lift for them.
And I think the more we can offer curriculum staff, the more we can offer even tech support on some of those instances.
That's there.
To fill in and be able to, you know, and I know we've kind of adjusted some of our technology managers to create teams. I think they need as much support. I also want to make sure, I know they're working from the campus, if they need anything else from a technology standpoint to help them over the twelve weeks, I encourage you to do that. I would also go as so as far as, you know, Dr. Vassos, this is not unprecedented, when someone takes twenty-four to one, we give a small stipend for that. I think a, some type of virtual stipend eventually. And I'm just, I'm not saying yes or no, because I have no idea. I'm just saying something of that nature, even if it's just extra comp time or something, at least something to help on those, that some volunteered, thank you, some were voluntold to be there. I think the more we can do to help some of these that are tackling a new task and challenge, which is very difficult, and maybe not what they want to do, I think is somewhat a good path to go.
No, I agree with your comments there, Mr. Hogg. I think that also, time is really important for these teachers in the virtual environment, and they do have some time to plan and things like that, because that's really the big component of this. If their classes do go above, they do get the waiver stipend, if you will, if their classes go beyond twenty-two in a virtual environment even. If somebody covers for a class, then they get that, just like you do at the homeschool. So, we'll look at that as well, at what are the things we can do to support this group of teachers. And I thank them ahead of time, because this is a journey for everyone, including them. But I also think that this is an opportunity for our students to continue learning and developing, which is our primary focus and task.
Perfect. And thank you, Dr. Vassos. And I just want to say thank you for the staff's pushing of encouraging. I think it's the right path to encourage and say that on masking, and I know, and to my colleagues, not to jump back, we've had some heated discussions, but I respect every single one of you, and I appreciate, you know, listen, we get heated sometimes because we're very focused on what happens for kids. So, the encouraging, I think, is the right option, and I just appreciate always having the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg. Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, President Mays, and my questions were revolving around SB fifteen, but I know in our alignment with this program, with what we know about that, but it sounds like we're waiting on some rulemaking from the commissioner on that, unless there's anything that you want to add in terms of alignment there. Also, I know when we decided to go this route, funding was a big question mark, and we were prepared to take it out of our ESRA funding, but I believe SB fifteen now gives us the path to have that covered, the funding for this program covered, correct? Or was that already approved?
Potentially, potentially. There's a lot of requirements that, you know, and I'll try not to be too critical, because it is a funding opportunity, but it's like districts developed this, and then, the rules came out. And now, if you didn't meet the rules, then you don't get the funding. And so, we didn't have the rules ahead of time. But, I think the biggest obstacle is going to be if they require secondary courses and things like that to be part of the program, that districts will struggle with that, not just us. But there's a lot of other requirements, like how the students got in, how they get out, before you get the funding. So, just a caution on, yes, there is an opportunity for funding. We'll see if we meet all those requirements. I think Dr. Wertz is looking at all those.
To be continued, we'll say on that. I'll keep my fingers crossed. And I appreciate the comments from my colleagues, Ms. McMurro and Mr. Hogg both. Tremendous job. You are indeed building a plane as you fly it, and the, being able to turn a program like this as fast as you guys did, it was amazing. And for those teachers out there that are trying to adjust with the rapid pace, you know, I would encourage them, you know, please be patient. You know, we are building their plane as we fly it, but it's for a very good cause and much needed. And I have trust that once we get through this, all those kinks will be smoothed out. But, Mr. Hogg brought up a good point, and a number of our districts around the state that are spinning up this are offering stipends, the virtual stipend, and I would encourage Dr. Vassos to look at that strongly, because this is still a lot of work. I think we have a colleague on the board who can attest to just how much work it is for a teacher to have to teach virtually versus moving out, as Mr. Hogg alluded to, maybe moving out of their comfort zone. So, yes, please, I would also echo Mr. Hogg's comments to look at offering a virtual stipend. And again, thank you, Dr. Wertz.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Mrs. McMurro?
I'm going to go ahead and say ditto. It's about the stipend, but when you mentioned the CNI department, it spurred another question for me. The teachers have received their training, the curriculum and instruction staff is supporting our teachers moving forward. And I know, I know that the training, you know, and you attended yourself, I know that the training was absolutely necessary, no matter what their experience was, because this is different. This is not concurrent teaching. This is different for all teachers right now. But, in regards to the folks that did the initial training, and then, our own curriculum instruction department, is the right hand talking to the left hand? Are we giving them training and the resources so that they can deliver their virtual instruction with fidelity, you know, where the training that they received, they have the tools that they need as well?
Yes, the training was provided by the teaching and learning department. So, the very people that are designing the scope and sequence, all the tools that you would use online, our technology team that's part of teaching and learning, all of them who actually did the creation, were the ones that delivered the actual training. So, all, we actually walked them through the process in the training session, and in some cases, actually modeled for them what you would actually need to do. So, yes, the answer to that question is yes.
Awesome. And I, you know, I know that teachers, and I think, teaching here in Arlington ISD for twelve years, I always appreciated as a teacher here that I had the autonomy to deliver the lesson in a style that I, that suited my students and that reached them, and I, that's not anything I ever want to sway away from. I just want to make sure that our teachers can devote as much time as possible on delivering strong instruction and getting to know their students and reaching them, rather than having to create all of the resources and virtualize all the resources from scratch. So, I would just ask that whoever can help with supporting that part of it, that would be wonderful, because it is very time, we learned this last year, it's very time-consuming to create seesaw and canvas modules, especially when you are creating, you know, Google Slides from a PDF or a canvas quiz from a consumable textbook page. And so, as much as we can give them support on that realm, I think that we would reap the benefits in the quality of instruction that they're delivering to our virtual students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McMurro. Thank you, Dr. Wertz. I've got one question. Mr. Chapa, do you have any questions?
Thank you, President Mays. No questions for me.
Okay. One question that I do have is for, when we start moving into the next session of parents opting to continue to do virtual, or new parents coming in, are we going to do any type of surveying of those parents who did get an opportunity to participate on what the experience was?
That's a good idea. We haven't actually talked about that, but I don't see why we couldn't. It just helps us refine our process. Feedback is a gift, is what they say. So, yeah, I don't see why we couldn't do that at all, especially as we're trying to refine our process. So, yeah, absolutely.
Great, great. I would love that. Okay, other than that, thank you, Dr. Wertz, for your presentation. Okay, next on our agenda is our consent agenda. So, we will now address the items on our consent agenda, which consist of routine items grouped together for approval as one item. Unless removed from the consent agenda, these items will be acted on at one time with no discussion. So, trustees, are there any requests for items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda for further discussion? Seeing none? Okay. Seeing none, is there a motion to accept the agenda?
I'll make the motion to accept the agenda.
Next second.
Okay. A motion by Mrs. Fowler, a second by Mr. Will Banks. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will roll call vote. Mr. Chapa?
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
David Will Banks, I vote yes.
Hallie Fowler, I vote yes.
Billy Hogg, I vote yes.
Kishmae, I vote yes.
Sarah McMurro, yes.
Okay, all present vote in the affirmative that motion passes. Next, we will, next on our agenda, we have our discussion item. Dr. Kavasas, I believe that we have made an agreement to move this discussion item to another agenda, since it was a discussion item and just an overview.
We'll bring it back to a future board meeting.
Absolutely. So, now, we come to our open forum for non-agenda items. Mrs. Benjamin, do we have any requesters registered to address the board on non-agenda items?
Yes, ma'am, we have two registered speakers. The first one is virtual, the second one is going to be here in person.
Okay, thank you. So, I do see our first for virtual is Steve Guadalupe. Is Steve connected?
Yes, give him just a second.
I sure will.
Hi.
Hi, Steve. We can hear you.
Hi, hello.
Can you hear me, Steve?
Yes, hello, good evening.
Okay, your time starts now.
All right, thank you.
Let me read one thing.
Thank you.
Your time hasn't started now. So, this open forum segment of the meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to address the trustees on any subject except personnel. This is not intended to be a discussion or a debate, and trustees will not reply to the speakers. Derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated. You will have two minutes to speak. Mrs. Benjamin will notify you when your time is up, and please end your presentation at that time. So, now, your time has begun.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for everything you guys have been doing. What I wanted to discuss was just as a parent of a Martin High School student athlete, I wanted to just address my disappointment in my daughter's denial in the participation in AISD gymnastics. You know, first and foremost, I know that, we all know that education is all about student growth and educational experiences and opportunities, and not only just with the regard to education, but we all, extracurricular activities and all those things kind of keep students engaged. Gymnastics is something that is an activity that my daughter has been engaged in, she's been involved in for twelve years. And as part of sports, you know, it's some, just keeps her engaged like many other sports do for other students.
Yes.
My daughter's now kind of feeling shut down, feels like the school district has rejected her from participating in something she's had a passion for. You know, and I understand, after speaking with a few people in the district, that gymnastics program will be phasing out in the next couple of years. What I don't understand is why we would rather have a student not be involved in an extracurricular activity of their liking and choice if the program's still up and running. You know, there are two coaches still available, there's the coach, the student-coach ratio is nowhere near unacceptable for any safety measures. So, why not admit the students who want to participate, you know, or send a communication of waiver or some sort of parent state, statement that tells them that discontinuation of the gymnastics program? So, I'm not just advocating for my daughter's involvement, but for the several children that wanted to participate this year in that opportunity for gymnastics. You know, the program still exists, the program is currently has a facility, you know, there's students enrolled in it still currently, so why not allow the students in the class until the program or facility's gone to participate? You know, this comes on, you know, we've been discussing on the heels of a tough year for students.
Thank you, sir, your time is over.
Nobody's taken a lot from, okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Guadalupe. Our next speaker is Lauren Dillard. Is Lauren present? No, is Lauren maybe virtual? Okay. Next on our agenda item is our superintendent's report. Dr. Kavasas?
Thank you, President Mays, and just a couple of, a piece of information to share. Last Friday, Arlington ISD night at the Globe Life Field was certainly a memorable event. If it comes up here, you'll see it on the screen. And while the Rangers may have lost the game, we shouldn't keep bringing that up, it was a big win for our district, thanks to the rendition of the national anthem. Handling those duties was Kiara Mullins from Martin High School. She did a great job, and you may have seen her before, because she sang the national anthem at the state of the district and at Ignite 2021. You should see her picture here in just a minute.
Sorry.
So, I'll pause a little bit there. There we go. There we go. So, she was certainly excited to be able to do that, and we appreciate her very much. She's been on tour with the district, it seems, and she does a great job, and thank you to her and her family as well. Big congratulations to Hunter Pollard, a kindergarten student from Wood Elementary, for lending a helping hand in a time of need. When a deaf dog went missing and members of the Arlington Fire and Police Departments needed help, it was Hunter to the rescue. They needed a skateboard, and Hunter volunteered his, which helped in the rescuing of Zoe the dog. For his efforts, Hunter was honored by both departments at school, and he was given a brand-new skateboard. Other kindergarten students also got to talk with members of both units of the Fire Department and Police Department and Hunter for saving the day with that generous offer that he had. While on the subject of heroes, I'd like to recognize the Gene High School cross-country runner, Ally Gutierrez. So, she recently won a cross-country meet, not because of where she finished, but because of her actions. When a runner from Van Alstine fell at the meet, Ally helped her up and then held her up for half a mile as the two competed in the Ally helped her up and then held her up for half a mile as the two competed in the race. Ally's a senior at Segin. She sacrificed her own individual time to help another competitor. The district found out about this from the district's, from from the other student's mother. And so Ally wasn't expecting any recognition or any real acknowledgement of this, but we want to thank her for her contributions and being such a responsible citizen. She's certainly a student that proves of all the wonderful and demonstrates that all are wonderful students in Arlington ISD, and she represents them well. So congratulations to Ally. Tuesday night, the district began a planning of our next strategic plan. And if you didn't know where Spence was taking pictures, he was. Stay tuned because there'll be plenty of information, and we have these teams, these three teams, was it three? Three teams that we were broken up into, and it was just energizing. And, you know, strategic plan, yeah, they're they're all pointing now, they're competing again. It was just a friendly competition, but strategic plan gives us that opportunity, and it doesn't come around very often. So this is our our next strategic plan. We've done two in the last nine years. And this is another opportunity to set that course in that direction, future programming and things like that for our district. So thank you ahead of time to our board, and thank you ahead of time to all the people that are going to be involved in that, that they don't even know it yet, that we're going to call on them to help us. Our strategic plan timeline is to have a strategic plan adopted this semester, so by December, if all goes well. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Kavasas. Are there any board members that have reports that they'd like to make? I don't see any buttons, and I don't see any hands. Okay, so, Mr. Secretary, do we have any items to consider?
Madam President, we do not.
Okay, so, last thing I just want to say is, first of all, thank you to our administrative staff. Thank you to our teachers. The beginning of this school year. One thing that I'm learning is I hope each of you, including you, Dr. Kavasas, take some time for yourself, a little bit of mental relaxation, a little bit of self-keeping yourself together because we've got the rest of this year to go. But do we appreciate all the work that you are doing behind the scenes? Appreciate it very, very much. And to that, I will say, wear your mask if you choose to, wash your hands regularly, and social distance when you can. With that being said, it's ten fifty-nine. This meeting is adjourned.